Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruta City Council Meeting. Uh, so, um, Deb, if you'd please call, uh, roll. Uh, time is now 7:00 PM.
Counselor Bremen.
Here.
Counselor Perser. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
I think.
Counselor Hansi.
Here.
All right, we're gonna move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand with us. Uh, we'd like to take the opportunity to allow a moment of silence for all faith and belief, the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we're gonna move into our proclamations and presentations. Uh, so we've got three presentations tonight. So the first one is the Student and Teacher of the Month, uh, for March, and it's the Fruta Eight-Nine School. And so I've got a couple things to read here. You wanna come up, Matthew? Um, I'm gonna come out front here, makes it a little easier. All right, so we've got one, uh, student of the month, and then we've got a teacher of the month. And so, uh, what we do with this, it's great to have, uh, our community involved here with the city, and, uh, D-51's a great partner of ours. And so we asked the principal to set the criteria. So each school that comes to us, uh, throughout the year, uh, has different criteria. And so I've got a, um, a student of the month here. And so what we're gonna ask is that you come up here, then stay up here, uh, cuz I know there's some people that are gonna probably wanna get photos, uh, of this. But, uh, for, uh, Fruta Student of the Month, and then I've got a little bit to read on this, is Clark Jones. So if you'd come up, Clark. All right, uh, so what was written about you is, "To be a good leader, one who others follow is usually someone who stands at the front of the pack. They are the outgoing people who happily tell others what to do, who boldly walk down the path first, and who loudly explore new ideas and concepts. People with these characteristics are often good leaders and are easy to recognize. But, much like the eye of a storm, the real power is not in those who stand out, but is actually in those who prefer to hang back, stand in the back of the group, and quietly listen to others first before ever jumping into the fray. The quietest human beings are the most effective leaders, even though by their very nature, they are often overlooked." Philosopher Layla Zoo once said, "A leader is best when people barely know he exists. When his work is done, his aim fulfilled, they will say, 'We did it ourselves.'" Mr. Clark Jones is such a person. His high GPA average attests for his high academic abilities, including taking all honors and AP courses. His dedication to the school's Knowledge Bowl team demonstrates his commitment to the pursuit of knowledge for the sake of knowledge. But it is his quiet voice in moments of discussion that his leadership shines. When Clark speaks, others listen. When Clark writes, others engage in reading. Clark is going to do amazing things for this world, in the quietest ways possible, and the entire Fruta Eight-Nine staff will have been made better for having taught him. In his own words, he once said, "We need to build community if we want to break out of our current mindset, and build a better, more hopeful, utopian society for the future of humanity." And that is how we witnessed the beginning of tomorrow's greatest leaders." So let's give Clark a big round of applause. All right, you get to stand up here the longest, so yeah, they're gonna wanna get photos. Um, so for Fruta Teacher of the Month, we've got Janelle Beach. So this is what was written about Janelle. So come on up. Certain individuals stand out in education for their extraordinary commitment, passion, and effectiveness in shaping young minds. Mrs. Beach is one such individual, and her recognition as Teacher of the Month is a testament to her outstanding contributions to her students' academic and athletic development. Mrs. Beach's enthusiasm for mathematics is infectious. Her passion creates an engaging and dynamic learning environment, inspiring her students to appreciate the beauty of the subject. Her incorporation of real-world examples fosters a deeper understanding math of mathematical concepts. Mrs. Beach places her student at the center of the learning experience. She takes the time to understand each student's strengths, weaknesses, and individual learning needs, ensuring that every student has the opportunity to thrive. Mrs. Beach goes above and beyond to support her students' success, whether through personalized feedback or creating a positive and encouraging classroom atmosphere. She is committed to seeing each student reach their full potential. Mrs. Beach extends her dedication beyond the classroom as a coach for both the volleyball and basketball teams. Her leadership and team-building skills have led to success in the court and imparted valuable life lessons to her players. Mrs. Beach's recognition as Teacher of the Month is a well-deserved honor. Her exceptional qualities as a mathematics teacher, combined with her coaching contributions in volleyball and basketball, highlight her commitment to the holistic development of her students. Mrs. Beach's impact reaches far beyond the classroom, leaving a lasting mark on the hearts and minds of those she teaches and coaches. Is she not here tonight? All right, does anybody wanna take any more photos? I mean, that's the question.
Yeah.
Come on up in the center. All right, let's give another round of applause. Wait, just a second. Matthew, don't forget that, don't forget that I heart Fruta button. We don't wanna... You might wanna keep that. All right, with that, uh, we're gonna move into our next presentation. It's the biannual update from the Fruta, uh, Area Chamber of Commerce. And so we've got our Chamber Director, Hila Bowers, here to present.
Oh, what a welcome. Thank you. Got my entire team with me here tonight, too, so shout out to them as well. All right, good evening, city council members, Mayor Kincaid. Thank you for allowing me the time to come up here and present tonight. Uh, I felt that it was important for us to come and present to city council on what we're hearing from the business community. Uh, especially as the Executive Director of the Chamber, I want to address the recent closures of some of the businesses in our community. It's with heavy heart that we acknowledge these setbacks, but rest assured, we are diligently working to address these challenges our employers are facing, and how we can help support them. Our team has had the chance to speak with some of the businesses who closed or relocated from Fruta, and I'd like to share some of what we learned. The employers that we did have the opportunity to speak with were in business between three and eight years. They closed for a variety of reasons, but the most significant and common issue we heard was due to an increase in rent. They're seeing declining revenue and increasing costs. The current state of the economy was not allowing these businesses to bring in enough to make ends meet. It became difficult to pass that increase down to their customers, keep enough business coming through their doors, and manage a profitable business. Competition was not an impacting decision to close. In fact, most reported that if we had more businesses, retail shops downtown, it would actually help support their business. Retail stores did report that it's hard to compete with online sales now. Workforce was a very big issue that we've heard across the board from all of our employers. Most of these smaller employers struggle to hire employees, which then leads to burnout because they're stuck running their business by themselves. The challenges remain competitive, uh, with, the challenges also is remaining competitive with wages, with the increase in minimum wage continuing to go up in Colorado. The high labor burden prevents employers who need to hire to be able to afford to hire. As we look to the future, the Chamber is committed to continuing our ongoing outreach and engagement by completing what we're calling Business Retention Visits. This is a survey that will help us better understand the climate of our businesses and what those challenges and setbacks are. We were able to complete, um, about four or five of those business retention surveys before I came here tonight, and I just wanted to share some of what we heard so far. Those businesses we spoke to have been in business between five and fifteen years. They all started operations in Fruta and are still operating in Fruta, and they have no plans on relocating out of Fruta, which is great and what we love to hear. One of them is even planning to expand their operations and open up a secondary branch in Grand Junction, so that's good. Um, all of these different industries range from construction, retail, manufacturing, and food. They all reported that their current sales are either stable or increasing. Businesses surveyed that are hiring or expect to be hiring in the next year express concerns over the ability to recruit employees, specifically because of the lack of interested candidates who live in Fruta or who could afford to live in Fruta. Interested candidates outside of Fruta aren't able to easily commute or afford to commute to Fruta. Businesses not expected to be hiring indicated that their businesses are busy enough to warrant hiring a new employee, but the high labor burden makes it impossible for them to hire someone. Several businesses indicated a significant portion of their revenue comes from visitors, but they would not survive if they had their local res customers as well. When asked about different community factors facing business, the primary pain points are availability of skilled labor, wage rates, and employee healthcare costs. Positive points indicated were overall community attitude towards business, local Chamber of Commerce and other economic development authorities, and seasonal tourism. Overall, the businesses surveyed feel that Fruta is a good and great place to conduct business, which is great and what we love to hear. The main concerns that we've identified are the cost of rent to maintain a storefront, which has increased the chances of businesses having to consider moving or closing. What this information tells us as the Chamber is helping us identify what our top priority and issues are for our business community. With the lack of skilled laborers and inability to stay competitive with wages, increasing minimum wage, and sole proprietors not having the ability to compete, or, or capabilities to hire an employee due to those high labor costs, we can help combat this by continuing to partner with other organizations such as CMU Tech and the Business Incubator Center, which offer free or no cost, or free or low-cost upscale and rescale opportunities. So as the Chamber, it's our job to help make sure that they understand that these resources are available. There's also an internship funding program through the Workforce Center that we've been working really hard to make sure that our employers are aware of. It's, uh, the Work Experience Program and On-the-Job Training. This helps provide funding support to employers to help bring on an intern in their office for, um, a short amount of time, or reimburse them for bringing on a full-time employee. The only downside to this is that employees are subject to specific criteria that they must meet in order to be eligible. So that help, that, uh, prevents some employers from bringing on the employees that they would like to because they don't meet that criteria to be able to be eligible. Um, that's mainly due to because the Workforce Center funding is reliant on state funding and those state requirements, so they have to uphold those. So the Chamber is committed to seeking solutions and support existing programs, and help look for additional funding for internships and apprenticeship incentives for our employers, so that employers have the systems in place to hire without having a significant increase to their labor burden. We've also identified an opportunity to increase our partnership with Grand Valley Transit. One of our employers noted that if we could help increase the time frequencies for our local transit bus, that at least five of their employees would benefit from it. We've also identified that several businesses reported that they either do not have a business plan, or a transition of ownership plan, um, or they haven't updated in a long time. The Business Incubators, Incubator Center also has some great resources available to help support that, so we wanna make sure that we're elevating those resources as well. Um, advocacy is one of the Chamber's top priorities and initiatives, and now more than ever, it's important for us to continue to advocate for pro-business legislation. We want Colorado, and more specifically Mesa County, to be a leading community to invest in and create jobs. Our Fruta Chamber has a Government Affairs Committee that meets biweekly on Mondays here in the Fruta Civic Center in the F-Works Conference Room, and we are actively looking at current legislation and making sure that we're taking action on those that are pro-business and opposing those that are not. And we encourage all of our city council members to get involved with that. You all have a standing invite and are welcome to join us so that you can stay up to date on what's happening. We also send out a, a weekly email update on what we are doing at the Chamber. Uh, I also wanted to mention, as I'm talking a lot about workforce, that I noticed that in tonight's packet, the, uh, geode flats preliminary PUD project, um, and they mentioned that payment of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for tax incentive for the community component. And it's creative ideas like that that I think that the City of Fruta could help benefit our business community by looking at funding incentives where we could either help with workforce development programming that could allocate funds to provide training and certification and professional development opportunities for childcare facilities, and help ensure that we have a skilled and qualified workplace, allowing for more facilities to open here in Fruta. Uh, we could also utilize funding like that for subsidies to help with childcare providers and help keeping childcare affordable for families and working families in Mesa County. The Chamber's commitment to fostering a thriving business environment remains a top initiative, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the City of Fruta. Thank you very much.
Don't run away yet. Does anybody have any questions? Or Kayla, or? Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you very much for coming out, and I'm very impressed with the, with the topics that you brought up, things that I'm uh, very excited to hear what you're doing. Um, the business retention visits, I'd love to, when you finalize, as far as you're gonna go, I'd love to hear a summary again of what's going on, because that's good data for us, and what we can do as a body to help strengthen, um, our business community as well. What can we do to get out of the way of, of businesses? Um, so I really encourage you to keep us apprised on that, if you would, please.
Absolutely. We will share that data with city council and, and city staff, so that way you can all stay informed.
And I, and I appreciate you, like, as a little example, but you reading the, looking at the rest of the agenda and seeing how there's a, what benefits of certain things could come to our community and how that can affect business, because that's, that's your number one topic, right? Help strengthen businesses. Um, I'd love to see you at meetings, uh, as much as you can, especially to be, to talk, come and talk about things that are pro or things that aren't necessarily good for business. We'd, we'd love to hear your site, uh, your insights to that more often. But thank you very much. I, I appreciate your presentation and the information that you got from it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you.
Anybody else?
I'm on the board, so yeah, well done.
All right, well, thank, thank you.
Um, before I go, I just want to extend a formal invite to all of our city council members to the Fruta Chamber Annual Banquet, coming up on April thirteenth at Absolute Prestige Ranch. We've brought invites for you all.
Thank you.
We hope you'll join us. It'll be the first big event out of Absolute Prestige. They just recently expanded, so it's gonna be a great time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Kayla. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our third presentation. It's the Fruta Youth Action Council, and they're gonna present, uh, their 2023 highlights and 2024 goals. And so we've got, um, Mark. Are you presenting, Mark? Are you lead, no?
You're a little too excited about presenting, Mark.
Hi, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Abby Tally. I'm a sophomore at Fruta Monument High School. I've been a part of Fruta, Fruta Youth Action Council since the beginning, so for five years. Fruta Action Council is a group of youth within the city who strive to improve our district through community sanctioned events, volunteer work, and services. We volunteer in many different community-run events such as the Sweetheart Run, Chunkin' Tree, and Night at the FCC. As a group, we try, we provide input on important issues in our lives and promote health and wellness to the youth in the community, as well as we consider ourselves a voice to the youth, a voice of the youth to the city council and to help make decisions that involve youth and youth activities.
Hello, I'm Cassie Smith. I am a senior at Carrefour Academy, and this is my second year in Fruta Youth Action Council. Sorry, we are on the slide with the service projects. Yes, thank you. So I am covering up, this is just a huge, long list of lots of things that we've been involved in. Not all of them are stuff that we have planned as Fruta, Fruta Youth Action Council, sorry. Um, but there are different things that we volunteer in that are led by the Fruta Rec Center or just the Fruta Events specifically. Um, I'd like to go over a few of them. The basketball tournament is a new thing that we started last year, and it was kind of just, uh, kind of like a little test drive. We're trying to figure out what we were trying to, I mean, do. We had prizes, and it's something that we're bringing back this year. Last year it was a three-dollar charge. This year it's a free event. We're trying to reach out to more people who are not only in Fruta but also in Grand Junction and possibly a little further, maybe Palisade. We're just trying to reach out to more of youth and trying to get us all involved and a little more of like a community. Uh, the coat drive is something that has started before I was a member. I don't know how long you guys were doing it before, but it is something that is recurring, just like a few of these other events that we've been doing. But it is something that is very successful that we have been doing, and it, this year I was not in charge of it, but we had a huge turnout, I'm pretty sure. I don't, were you there? We, I think we had four bags full of coats that we were able to drop off. Um, the second thing is the angel tree. That is something that I was super passionate about this year. I had previously done it with my family at the Salvation Army, and so I was like, oh my gosh, bring it to Fruta Community Center, let's get this rolling. And this year they said that, they're like, oh, you can start off with twenty tags. And this year, successfully, all twenty tags are filled. Twenty tags of presents were given to children who are in need. Um, another thing, it's just like the trunk and treat, that is not our event, but we helped out this year, where we kind of, we helped out, we had our little booth, and then we also went and had our pumpkin carving event, which is also a new thing that we started this year. And it just, another thing, trying to get the community involved and get us a little together. Um, collaboration with Rise Above Colorado. I am also a member of Rise Above Colorado. That is also another teen action council that we have kind of like involved with Fruta. They were a part of putting up the mural on the Dinosaur Journey Museum, or, I don't know what you would call it, but, um, that is just another thing that we've kind of been a part of. It, we haven't recently been involved with them, but it's another kind of organization that we have a part of as Fruta Action Council that we work with. Oh, sorry, this is also my slide. Um, our success, I already mentioned, um, the basketball tournament, but many of our search projects, um, have been very successful, brought in a large youth-based community towards the rec center. Um, our involvement is usually at the rec center. We have lots of events there, but we also, um, have the push for the involvement of youth in the community. Um, Splash Bash is another thing that we've been throwing way before I was on, and it's just been more and more successful each year. This year, it is May twenty-fourth. Right, yeah. And we're, we're hoping to kind of get more teen involvement this year. It's kind of been aimed towards younger youth, but this year we've got plans for teens, hopefully, and we can do more like a night pool party kind of thing. It's just another one of our successful events.
Hello, my name is Ben, oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council. Hello, my name is Benjamin Romero. I'm a fairly new member of Fruta Youth Action Council. The reason why I joined Fruta Youth Action Council, because I'm on a mission to empower the youth, and I think and know that through this council, I can do so. I want to, I want the youth to be more involved so they can learn to respect and care for our community. I take a lot of pride in our community, whether it's on the football field, wrestling mat, or in the classroom. This is important to me because I believe for, that for someone to truly care about something, they have to be involved in that thing, and that very own thing is our beloved City of Fruta. That's why I joined. Fruta plant, future plans and events for Fruta Youth Action Council. We, as a council, agreed that the best way to try to reach the youth is to gain a larger social media presence within the area of Fruta. So that's how we're willing, or trying to push and kind of promote our, um, our plans and our events such as like Splash Bash and to get the youth involved more. There's also room to grow with our community involvement, and we think that by creating and painting more murals or building statues around the city to maybe re, have that represent as a symbol of youth to get that more, to get more youth involved in the community and maybe be excited about something. And that's my slide.
So overall, the Fruta Action Council, we stand for youth voice, and we choose to empower each other and become involved in our success of our communities so that we can grow into a community that's even better for the youth of the future.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, don't, don't run away, don't run away yet. Uh, we may have some questions, so don't run away yet. Anybody have any questions?
I, I do.
All right, go ahead, Janine.
Um, first of all, thank you guys so much for presenting and talking to us and the people behind you. I know it can be a little nerve-wracking, so thank you very much um, for doing that. I, you mentioned, like, you wanna be a voice to bring things to us, so I'm really curious. Each of you, number one thing, what would you like us to support you in?
I think for me, it's just like getting the youth involved in this community, cuz we are the future of the community, and I've seen a lot of disinterest in even like school events in a lot of the youth, so getting them involved and interested in our community and what we like to do here.
I would also like to say that, uh, you guys can come to us to maybe help involve youth, cuz I don't know if it's important to you guys, but it's important to us. So, uh, if you guys need anything, helping with an event or anything, we'd also, as a council, would like to tell you guys that we are willing to help you with whatever, so.
Yeah, go ahead. I would say something more like getting involved in the, like, this, these kind of activities. I think it's super important. I've been joining Parks and Rec Board meetings for a little while, not super consistent, but I think it's super important for us to be, as a youth, to be involved in these events and kind of figure out how this runs, because being involved in our community is not just community service and volunteer work. I think it's also being present at these meetings and being able to present and speak in front of all of you guys in a more formal manner.
Anybody else?
How many, how many do you currently have? Excuse me, is it just the three of you right now? I, I'm not familiar with what our numbers are.
Um, we probably have, what do you say, like, ten or twelve?
Oh, good.
Nineteen?
Oh, good.
We have nineteen, yeah. We have, sorry.
Doing a lot of, it's just.
Yeah, we have, uh, we have nineteen members, and we're trying to, uh, get more.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, keep up the great work.
My question is, is there, I know you're talking about the basketball tournament, isn't a fee this year, so how do you guys cover that? Um, are you guys doing fundraisers, or what are you doing? I know you're volunteering, but is there other ways where you can offer the, the free tournament?
Well, we have a grant somewhere. I don't know where it comes from, if I'm being honest. I think this is more of a Miranda question. We do have a budget. We do have a budget.
Budget that, um, we're able to utilize so that we can, uh, bring these different events to the community, gain a little bit of interest, and we're also looking to make sure that we can involve everybody with it, so we thought that this year it would be a good opportunity to utilize the FCC gym and to be able to just do small prizes and have as many interactions and involvement as we can this year.
Okay, cuz I'd encourage you, you're asking us to, if we have stuff for you, but if there's an idea that you guys have that you wanna bring to us that needs some budget funding, I think we'd all be interested in hearing about that. So, you know, I know you do have some grant money in that, but if you guys wanna think big, um, we'd be happy to hear some great ideas that way, too. All right. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public participation. Uh, so this section is set aside for the city council to listen to items that do not appear on the agenda. So if you have something that you'd like to, um, speak on that is not on our agenda, now is your opportunity. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? All right, I'm hearing none, so I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna move into our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, all of these items on our consent, consent agenda have been all agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They'll all be approved by a single motion. So we're gonna open up the consent agenda to public comment. So if there's anything on the consent agenda anybody'd like to talk about, now would be your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'm gonna close consent agenda and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Um, yes on all items and.
Um, yes on all items and no on F.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen? Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into, I just want to acknowledge, I think we've got some of our, I know we have some of our newly appointed boards and commissions members. We had seven on our list to appoint tonight, so, um, I'm going to ask him, if there's anybody in the audience that is on our new, newly appointed board, would you please stand? All right, well, thank you. We, we just want to acknowledge those newly appointed board members because they do serve a big role in helping us make, uh, wise decisions for council. And so we appreciate seeing people applying and wanting to be committed to our community. So thank you again for that. All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. Um, so we've got, uh, three legislative hearings and two quasi judicial hearings tonight. And so our first, uh, legislative hearing is Resolution 2024 dash O six and it's amending the 2024 budget. And we've got our assistant city manager Shannon Vossen here to present.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Uh, Resolution 2024 dash O six is a supplemental appropriation of funds in the general fund, conservation trust fund, the capital projects fund and also the sewer fund uh, to complete projects that were included in the 2023 budget, but not, um, completed for various reasons and to also purchase equipment that was included in the 2023 budget, but again, not purchased for um, for a few reasons. As with any supplemental budget amendment, I like to include a table at the end of the cover sheet, kind of highlighting all changes to the budget. Again, all these are rollover from the prior years, so this is not any new funding that we're pulling from. Rather, it's just funding that we need to re-appropriate to use and spend in this year. Um, I won't go through all these, but I'll kind of hit and touch upon a few of the highlights. Uh, we do have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase two police interceptors in our general fund. That's for our public safety department. Um, if you remember, we were able to place or attempt to place an order in October uh, for two police interceptors. Unfortunately, I didn't go through, but we were able to place one early this February and those will be delivered in December 2025. So again, this time next year, I'll be standing up here in front of you with the same budget amendments and maybe just another, a slight change on that. Uh, we have a lot of capital projects that we need to roll forward next year. Um, here are some of the big ones Fremont Street Intersection, that's specifically for your right-of-way acquisitions. Rolling forward three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, 19 Road, three hundred and four thousand dollars to be rolled over to 2024. Again, that is all for right-of-way acquisition. Um, we have started that in full and we're kind of in the first of three months of really narrowing down all the right-of-way that we need for 19 Road expansion. So we anticipate that will be done in, in the next several months. Uh, 2.5 million dollars for Reed Park, that's all construction costs, the playground, um, the shelter as well. Again, that's funded through general fund dollars, conservation trust fund dollars and variety of different grants. And then we have a few rollover projects, just to wrap up, uh, some of the larger projects that we uh, can almost completed last year at the wastewater reclamation facility, specifically the aeration project and also the replacement of manholes and sewer lines that were impacted by H2S gas. Um, as always, I'm happy to take any questions from the council and I'll leave it there for public comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right, thanks Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to open this item up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to this one?
No, I just have a clarification question.
Sure.
The wastewater reclamation facility, uh, the replacement of the failed bearing. That's, is that the one that failed prematurely?
It is.
Have the old one fixed and then we have spare.
Yeah, so that's the one. So this was not an actual capital project that was in the original budget, but yeah, we came to council. Um, I think it was May or June to where we noticed when those assembly units started to fail. So yeah, we had someone come on site, they removed it, they tried to refurbish that one. Unfortunately, they couldn't. Um, so yeah, they're installed, uh, the new ones and, uh, and in the process of hopefully refurbishing the other two that were taken out. But yeah, that was paid for with, um, funds that are designated solely for equipment replacement at the wastewater reclamation facility. Um, I, we, we hope it will. We have ran into some issues with these particular parts. Um, but we, we hope that at least give us one, if not two spares, but we'll keep you updated on that. We've just ran into some issues about installation and some other things, but they're working through it over there at the plant. Yeah. Of course.
Do we have a motion then?
I move to adopt Resolution 2024 O six, amending the 24 budget to reappropriate funds in the general fund, conservation trust fund, capital projects fund and sewer fund to complete capital projects, capital equipment initially, uh, included in the 2023 annual budget.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Affirmative.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Hi.
Counsel Perser? Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our second hearing, which is ordinance 2024 dash O nine. It's a second reading and it's a lease agreement between the city of Fruta and Region 10. And so we've got our assistant city manager Shannon Vossen here to present.
Uh, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council for the opportunity to present. Uh, ordinance 2024 dash O nine is approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement for the Fruta Carrier Neutral Location with Region 10 uh, to manage, uh, that location and also use, um, the location. Uh, kind of by way of background, you know, for the last couple of years, we've been working on some pretty significant broadband projects, not just in Fruta, but throughout Mesa County and Garfield County as a whole. Um, our project included building a lateral from fiber and, uh, a fiber that was installed along I-70. Um, bringing that fiber, uh, back to a location in Fruta and then hosting that connection um, at the location or what we're, um, referring to as our carrier neutral location. Um, that, this project is almost done, you know, a lot of the work with actually installing the conduit. All the construction work is pretty much wrapped up. I think we just have a few kind of loose ends to tie up. Um, and the building has been placed, but you know, our goal with this whole project was to encourage private investment um, in Fruta of internet infrastructure, but also provide an open access middle mile connection for providers to use now in the future. Um, again, almost done. The next kind of steps in our project, now we have the lateral constructed and also the carrier neutral location built is to enter it into this lease agreement with Region 10 to manage the space. Um, we are in the process of purchasing the optical equipment, um, to outfit the space, uh, so then other providers can come in, but also this will serve as part of the overall Region 10 network. Um, which is a pretty significant and will be a very large network of air net throughout Colorado, but also Utah, um, New Mexico as well. Um, so it's been a great project. Um, Region 10 has been great to work with. This is a model that they use all throughout Southwest Colorado. Uh, Region 10 is a council of governments, so, um, we're in Region 11, so we are part of associate governments in Northwest Colorado. This is just south of us, um, but they have been kind of leading the charge with these regional projects and have been uh, very helpful and we're very happy with, uh, what we've been able to achieve so far. I do have, uh, Corey Brindle, the broadband director for Region 10 on the call as well to answer any questions, um, after public comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Thanks Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to open it up to, uh, public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anything for Corey, I mean?
Corey, anything to add to the presentation?
Um, you know, I, I just, uh, possibly let me share a screen real quick. Um, just a kind of quick refresher on, on where we are. So, you know, Region 10 sits out here in the western portion of the state and we have, uh, decided to expand, uh, through to Denver and down to Durango. And the project that Shannon is describing is part of the I-70 build. Uh, basically from Denver through Grand Junction all the way out to Fruta and, um, ultimately the goal here is to, to reach better sources of internet access, provide support for your ISPs that are investing in your area and make sure that the, the services stay up. You've got ample capacity and the costs over time come down and and it's just been phenomenal to partner with so many communities in building this network. Um, looking forward to getting uh, Fruta lit up and, and equipment installed and ready to go. Glad to take any questions.
That's great. Yeah, what's the timeline that we're looking at having that active?
That is a tough answer. It's.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we keep hearing. Everybody keeps saying, hey, I thought we were supposed to have it already. I know and, you know, we understand that. So what's a, a ballpark?
This summer for sure. Um, we, we were shooting for March 31st. I think we're going to be delayed a little bit beyond that. We, we had to reprogram a federal grant that cost us several months of time. Uh, we have made progress in a couple of different areas. The, the ZO fiber and the C dot fiber has progressed along the highway significantly. Um, I am in, uh, probably final talks with Emery to procure the fiber coming out to Fruta along the highway. Pretty close to signing that agreement. And we do have about two million dollars worth of, uh, electronic equipment that has showed up at the lab in California and is ready for staging at this point. So hopefully we'll be installing here in, within the next one to three months, um, somewhere in that timeframe, but it's, uh, it's getting much closer. Um, a lot of the variables have been kind of beyond my control. Um, waiting on a federal agency, working with the Department of Transportation, waiting on procurement cycles. It's all these things that as soon as I put a stake in the ground, someone else moves it, but, uh, but I think we're looking at, um, probably midsummer at this point, to be realistic.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly clarify, I believe your question was regarding our project, but also there is a separate project of, um, uh, clear networks building out in Fruta. Um, so we are told that they're about 90% done on the north side. The south side will take a little bit longer, especially since they're heading out towards Kingview. There's a lot of rock. They could run into, you know, other things, um, issues that could come up as they kind of go out there, but we think they'll probably be live sometime, um, prior to maybe our project being completed and that's their goal as well. But yeah, they will, they will use the CNL. We've had a handful of internet service providers come in and request access to it. So by entering into this lease, that allows us to have Region 10 manage all of those subleases, but also use the space. And that really frees up our staff time to help with that because Corey and them are the experts, so we definitely, uh, trust them with those, uh, subleases and that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any, Ken?
Having sat on AGNC and, and having heard from Region 10 for years, I, kudos to Region 10 for tackling such a project that everybody in your region needs and succeeding. Just a real success story that it would be nice to see happen everywhere.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, really appreciate it. It's, it's been a long time in coming, but we are getting close to activation, so.
So just a refresher, um, just to make sure I'm up to speed. So right now we got middle mile that's brought into the city and then we have a company that right now that is per se, laying out the hardware to the, the lines out to all the residents.
The fiber, yep.
Yeah, the fiber. When's that going to be completed?
So the actual, the private build, um, we can, we can, uh, touch base with them. I know our public works director was meeting with them weekly, but the last I heard, and Kimberly can come up and correct me if I'm wrong, they were about 90% done on the north side. Um, there's, there's a couple of phases. So there's the construction where, you know, you see the crews out, they're laying conduit. Um, I think they're almost wrapped up with that on the north side. There's some few places left, but then they have their own crews coming and actually pull the fiber through all of that, but the south side will take a little bit longer, but last time I talked to them, they were hoping to launch, uh, in March, April, but yeah, I mean, things have, things have come up, but we can double check and follow up, uh, let you know.
So once the hardware's laid, then the, the services can be then brought in and the different service providers can come be part of the network and then that's how we'll get, uh, the services out to the homes. But right now we, what is it, Clear Fiber? That's the, the one.
Clear Networks, yeah, yeah, yeah. And our goal with this project too, um, as with any, uh, of these projects, open access, but also uh, equal opportunity for any internet service provider to use our, uh, fiber that we're bringing in through this project and that we're housing at our carrier neutral location. Um, so yeah, we hope that multiple providers will utilize it. They've already expressed, several of them have expressed interest, so that's why we're going through this process. So Region 10 can sublease with them. But yeah, you know, our goal from the start, um, I remember when we first started working on this, you know, the internet companies were always like, well, if you pay us, we can build out to the home. And that number at the time was some crazy number. I can't remember, Mike. I mean, it was millions and millions of dollars and over the last several years, it's kind of transitioned from, okay, well, maybe it's less. Oh, now we want to partner. And now they're just doing it with our help of some of these projects. So, you know, through all the federal funding that's come out, all the state funding that's come out, all the regional projects that Corey and his team have kind of facilitated, has really led to all this investment that we're seeing and it's very encouraging.
That is, like, um, it's going to create competition, which is good for the consumer. It's going to bring us more opportunities and faster speeds for cheaper. Yeah, I love it. Like where I live, I have two options.
Right.
Uh, I, I don't even get spectrum. I get DSL or, or satellite. Um, and so it'd be nice to have another option that I can try to combat my hundred and twenty dollar a month.
Right, right, right.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and the speeds we're bringing in, I mean, these are speeds that we've not had access to. I mean, Corey, I believe two gigs symmetrical, meaning upload and download speed. Um, those are speeds we, we've never had, but yeah, through kind of the facilitation of Region 10 and all these region projects.
This is a great one.
And just to add, add kind of a hint of clarity, guys, there, there's a middle mile project, which is what Region 10 is working on, which is city to city. It's basically bringing the source to Fruta and then, uh, making that available in a a small equipment room where we can lease rack space to the local ISPs. And then there's the last mile component, so middle mile and last mile. Last mile goes from that equipment room out to the homes and businesses and that's primarily where the private, um, companies are working. Uh, we don't serve any end users directly. We're kind of like a wholesale model where we deliver the supply to those private companies and we enable that competition and, and, you know, use of the facility and investment in the community. And those last mile providers literally do the build out to the addresses within the town.
Right. And this project that we're doing, um, is funded through federal grants, but also state grants just for broadband. I mean, because of all our investment, that's kind of, um, cuts down on private providers who do want to build that fiber to the home or fiber to the premise. And then that's just passed along to residents, we hope, so they see those lower rates for better service and speeds.
We're basically trying to lower the barrier of entry for private investment.
Us per gigabyte is, will plummet.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I never thought I'd say this, but in an effort to get us lit up, I'm going to approve ordinance 2024 dash O nine, approving a lease agreement between the city of Fruta and Region 10 for the use and management of the Fruta Carrier Neutral Location and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Hi.
Counsel Perser? Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey, for being here.
Thanks, everybody. Good to see you again. Cheers.
All right, thanks Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to move into our, uh, third legislative hearing. It's ordinance 2024 dash O eight. It's a second reading, reading and ordinance are authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Farm LLC for its purchase of city property known as 169 South Mulberry Street. And we've got, um, Kim Crawford, uh, special counsel, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, our city attorney here to present on this one.
Thank you. Is Mary Elizabeth going to start or am I starting?
I'm going to let you start.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me here again tonight. Um, this presentation will look familiar. It looks like I didn't get the, the date revised when I resent this today. I, I noticed I, um, had not saved my documents, my apologies, but you did, uh, see this presentation first on February 6th. Again, to just give you, um, an idea of what's been going on with this property and, and some of the negotiations that, um, the city has been undertaking, um, to get this development agreement, um, with, with the property on, um, on Mulberry. Uh, next slide, please. So just an overview, um, of this, we are looking at the objectives of the development agreement, the key terms, some considerations that the city needs to take into, into account while they're, before they approve this and um, a couple of risks that you need to understand before moving forward. Little bit of background, um, Farm LLC is the, this is the buyer and they have proposed to purchase and redevelop um, the powder coating building that's located at 169 South Mulberry. Right now, it, it's, uh, some sort of garage that needs some updating. And the objective is to redevelop and renovate this property to provide an extension of business and arts to the area. So again, you're, you're trying to redevelop and improve this, this facility and the property. The intent is to redevelop and, and, and approve the property for public parking as well as future retail and or studio space. The city's vision is to provide a mixed-use redevelopment that brings vibrancy to the downtown core of the South Mulberry area. The objectives are to adhere to the Fruta in Motion Comprehensive Plan, which has been discussed in depth and has been adopted by the city. The city's goals are really to read, to develop a pedestrian oriented commercial area that brings vibrancy to the Fruta, Fruta community. To build on the downtown core and to establish civic and social hubs in the community. To remediate blight of the current building in the surrounding areas. To focus on commercial rather than ground level multifamily development, but to to bring in more commercial. Property and retail to the area. Intent is to promote support arts, outdoor recreation, retail, and the general vibrancy of the downtown. Future uses of this property are planned to include the restaurants, hospitality and community gatherings. The goals and objectives of the city are mainly to eliminate blight in the Mulberry corridor. Revitalize the nonconforming current use of the property, which has been sitting vacant in the downtown area. Spur economic development and revitalization of the area. Increase parking and access to the area for residents and for visitors of the city to encourage more commercial and and development space. Create a thriving downtown with strong local businesses, inviting streetscapes and events. And places that encourage community gatherings, make it a better place for the residents to commute and to to just. Get together and enjoy the community, ease of access for bicycles, vehicles, cyclists and pedestrians. So in developing this agreement, your city staff has been contacted, you know, working with Farm LLC and. Looking through the terms that would best benefit the city and establish all of your goals. And in, in trying to just figure, you really essentially. Develop the best deal for the city in light of what its needs are. And again, looking at at your community development plans. So you're negotiating all of the conditions and in terms of the development agreement in order to execute a closing and the sale of the property. And again, there has been a purchase contract submitted to the city for Farm LLC to purchase this property. One of the requirements of this property development is for the buyer to obtain obtain a letter of credit. That can be drawn upon by the city at any time to complete improvements to this powder coat property. In the event that the buyer defaults or is unable to fulfill his obligations. The redevelopment includes removal of a lean to additions along the alley. New metal roof, replacement of skylights, new garage doors, new exterior lighting and new exterior paint of the existing building. Along with this, the Farm LLC is going to provide twenty initial parking spaces. Which they will lease to the city for five years. On or before the expiration of the lease, the buyer will convey to the to the city. Certain property, including twenty parking spaces. Upon conveyance of those parking spaces, the city shall. The the parking shall be improved and maintained at the sole expense of the city, including paving, lighting and landscaping. Twenty four existing parking spaces north of the Farm LLC property. And south of East Aspen Avenue shall remain with without private signage. And be available for public use until the twenty spaces have been permanently dedicated to the city. The buyer is responsible for all costs of maintaining the existing twenty four spaces. The purchase price is six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is comprised of cash and non monetary contributions. These are the terms that the city has agreed to and Farm LLC has agreed to. And the parking development agreement that will be executed should the city council adopt this ordinance would contain these key terms. For the city to consider before approving this ordinance on second reading. Is does this plan of development meet the city's stated goals and objectives? Will the remodel and renovation of the powder coat building meet with the city's objectives of remediation of blight? And the enhancement of the downtown area? Is there a better use of the property? Is the city protected in the event the buyer fails to perform? And are there additional risks for the city? These considerations have been certainly addressed and looked into by the city attorney, by. City manager and by Dan and these considerations have been taken into account when. When we were drafting and assisting with the development agreement. The risks that we have identified really are essentially two. The biggest risk is the buyer will not be able to meet its contractual obligations. The buyer has does have an opportunity to back out of the project during the terms of of the. The due diligence to for the purchase contract. If that is the case, and there are conditions that cannot be met and the project. That the property cannot be acquired, the city would have lost the staff time and other time that's been dedicated to this project. But there are no monetary penalties to the city and the city would be able to continue to pursue pursue other offers and options with this property. Another risk that was identified is that the buyer may not be able to meet its contractual obligations to develop this property. City staff has addressed this by requiring that Farm LLC. Provide a letter of credit that can be drawn upon by the city at any time upon the occurrence of certain events that. That provide the the ability, inability of the buyer to meet the considerations and the benchmarks. In which case the city could draw and go in and complete the improvements on their own. So the development agreement is in the process of being negotiated. Right now it's been drafted. Farm LLC is looking at the agreement. This ordinance essentially authorizes your city, your city manager to execute this agreement when it has been been finalized and to move forward. With the development of this project. Are there any questions?
All right, before we have questions, we're going to have to open up to public comments. So if that's everything you have, Kim, correct?
It is. Thank you.
All right, Mary Elizabeth, did you want to add anything?
Sorry, I had a technical difficulty. Just wanted to add that we also have drafted the parking lease, which is part of the development agreement. For the city to lease the twenty public parking spaces from Farm LLC until they. Until the city and farm designate what will become the permanent public parking spaces to be dedicated to the city. So that also is being considered by Farm at this point, and that's part of. The documents that this ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I just add, Mayor, members of council, Mike Bennett, city manager, just to add to what Mary Elizabeth and Kim Crawford had shared. If acting on the ordinance tonight authorizes the ability for for myself and my role to close on the property and. Upon closing, those two agreements would be signed that reflect the terms that were covered by our attorneys. So. If they're by chance, at this point in time, Farm LLC is is in full agreement of those terms as we have covered on our end as well. So obviously, if there were, if for any unforeseen reason, if the terms were to change, then we would obviously come back to you. But authorizing the ordinance tonight allows me to close and similar to like a development agreement or something like that. And in the past, you're authorizing us to execute those two agreements. That are that are reflected what's in the packet in the real estate agreement, because as you know, when the real estate agreement closes. Those go away. So the two agreements that cover the parking and the development agreement would be signed upon closing as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, with that, we're going to open up to public comment. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions for either staff or attorneys?
Yes. All right, so. So we bought this property a few months ago and what have we spent so far with. Buying the property and then any improve. I think we've done some tests or whatnot. So what have we invested into this property as a community?
Yeah, you're right. Counselor Hancy, we, as you know, for and for the record and for the audience, when we purchased the property. We purchased it for the the same value of purchase price, but then we conducted environmental one, environmental two and some other. Studies, looking at Dan Karas, our planning and development director. Dan, are you able to elaborate a little bit more on the details of that? Yeah, just take a moment as we pull those up. I don't want, we don't want to guess off the top of our head real quick here.
And so, and I'll just follow up with more questions as you're pulling it up. So what we're getting back, so if by selling this, what are, what's the community going to benefit from dealing with this transaction and from us buying it now, turning it around and selling it? For similar price. So we're, we're getting blight fixed. We're getting additional parking spots and improvement to. Current facilities to be in other business space or whatnot that it will be determined by the owner. But those, are there any other values that we get besides those presented in the?
No, great question and and covered a few of those points very well. We, as a city, you know, just in general, we have zoning, right? And 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 then there's property rights and people that own property as long as 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 uses fit the zone and they meet the requirements of. Our land use code, then they are able to develop any use that meets, you know, the zoning requirements and the land use code requirements. This and being in the heart of the center of Fruta and a large portion of downtown where we see. Growth going both north and south. Our long term plans show the downtown growing north and south of Aspen Street. We've seen a lot of that growth, especially on Mulberry and heading south on Mulberry. And even at. Highway six and fifty. And so with that, you know, one could look at this and say, you know, we could have just left it on the market to see what happens, right? It was listed for sale for a for a period of time without a buyer. But we took a proactive approach as a city to make an offer, get that under contract. And then at that point, for the purpose of. Having a driving the blight to be changed sooner than later. So as soon as we. Took ownership, we fenced it so that we wouldn't have issues. We cleared the south. Part of the lot so that we could have some temporary overflow parking in the downtown immediately. And then our intent was as an owner, as a city, to encourage redevelopment that fits our long term plans. So the type of commercial development that we'd like to see. Having a willing participant in farm who also owns the parcel. South of farm and then the house that's south of that lot as well. Until you're adjacent to this lot. So pretty much that whole block from Aspen to, gosh, I'm going out of McCune, I believe. And so with that, that gives us the opportunity, one, to remove the blight, to encourage the type of development that we want to see. To get the value back in what we paid because in when we went into purchasing this. The cost of Dan's looking up, that was during our contract period, right? So we were, you know. Are we, are we going to back out of this deal? Are we going to go through with this deal? So it was a due diligence cost. That was cost we decided to take on. Whether or not we sell it in the future or no matter what we do, if we're, if we're purchasing it to have an influence on blight, to have an influence on economic development. And and the development of this site per our plans, we were going to take those on. Another cost we were looking at, had we not. Entertain this possibility would be, you know, do we remove the building or do we have to improve the building? And so that's a cost and a value that we're getting back in in this to see that redeveloped. And we have a line of credit to draw on as as was covered. And then the ability to work with the developer on. How this ultimately develops with new commercial uses, which could shift on the land. But we maintain twenty new public parking spaces that we would then be, those would be dedicated back to us, which we received the value of that land after selling it to them and that gets dedicated back to us. To add additional public parking, which was a, which was another goal of of this property. And and then also maintaining that they keep the twenty four spaces that are separate from this twenty north of farm. Open and available to the public during this period of time.
Last question that I have is how large is that that letter of credit that's going to be?
It's to the value that we've estimated for bringing the the powder coating building to, because it's based on the the building redevelopment. So. It's, it's based on the value of that, bringing it up to code, which we had evaluated with our, our building department. And then the all the improvements that they listed that are listed out in in the agreement and that number. Is, that's right, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the total for what's estimated for all those improvements.
Thank you.
So we paid six hundred and twenty thousand plus twenty thousand dollars in the, the studies and due diligence for the purchase. So a total of six forty.
That's great. This is a huge win win for our community. Fantastic. That's all I have made.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Janine?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm not sure who can answer this. I've asked it before. It says purchase price is six hundred and forty thousand. The actual cash is two hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred ten. And then the non monetary contribution is four hundred nine thousand, eight hundred eighty five dollars. Can we get more specific about what that non monetary contribution?
Oh, right. Great question. Yeah, we have, we do have our, we do have farm here who could go through that. It's broken down into. The value of of the building, the value of the land they dedicate back to us and and those pieces, but not to. That's a great point. I was going to say not to put them on the spot, but we just put them on the spot.
On the spot.
Does anybody have any other questions while he's looking? No, all right. Where's the background music?
Farm for six hundred. Is that a first?
They tell a lot of lies around here.
By the way, the popcorn's an awesome addition to.
Gavin, you state your name for the record, just so we've got it in there.
Absolutely.
Address?
Gavin Brooke here is the representative of Farm LLC. Let's see, Counselor Perser, to answer your question directly. There are three components to the purchase. One of the components is just the straight cash. The other is two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in exterior improvements. So those are generally the things that we just went through, the blight removal, the new roof, the repainting, the repaving of the parking lot, temporary, all of that. And then the last piece is the value of the land, the twenty parking spaces listed on. And that's a hundred and eighty two thousand, eight fifty seven. And that is just simply proportionate to the six hundred and forty thousand dollars. In square footage of what it takes to put twenty parking spaces on a piece of property.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this project.
Thank you. Any other questions while I'm up here?
Anybody else have anything? All right.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
All right.
Council member Perser, thanks for that question. You did bring it up at the last one and apologize we didn't have it detailed in the packet, but thank you, Gavin, for going through that.
All right. Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four oh eight in an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Farm LLC. For its purchase of city property known as one sixty nine South Mulberry, Fruta, Colorado, and execute all documents. To perfect the sale and the conveyance of the same.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Counselor Breaman. Counselor Perser. Counselor Williams. And Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. All right, with that, we're going to move into, we've got two quasi judicial hearings. So the first one is a new liquor license application. It's a request to approve a new hotel and. Restaurant malt, venomous and spirituous liquor license for Blue Lotus Vietnamese Restaurants. And that's at one fifty two South Mesa Street. And we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Mr. Rare, good evening, city council. Mr. Mayor, good evening, city council members. Deb Woods, deputy city clerk for the city of Fruta, and I'm here to present the hotel and restaurant liquor license application for the Blue Lotus Vietnamese restaurant. The application and fees were submitted by the applicant on January 29th of 2024. And a notice of public hearing was posted at the site on February 16th of 24. And a notice was published in the Daily Sentinel on February 24th of 24 notifying the public of tonight's public here, public hearing. As the council is aware, from going through previous applications for liquor licenses, for new liquor licenses, there are only two things that the council must consider when approving a liquor license. One is the character of the applicant and the other is the needs of the neighborhood. Staff did background checks concerning the character of the applicant's back, background checks were conducted through the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the Colorado Bureau of Investigation, the Mesa County Sheriff's Office, the city of, cities of Grand Junction and Fruta Police Departments, the Washington State Patrol, the Pennington County, South Dakota Sheriff's Office, and the Rapid City, South Dakota Police Department. All these background checks came back clear, so there are no grounds with which the council could deny the application based on the character of the applicant. Concerning the needs of the neighborhood, the applicant submitted a survey that was signed by 14 individuals, all were whom, all of whom were in favor of supporting the liquor license being issued. And they also responded that they did not feel that the needs of the neighborhood have already been met by other existing liquor establishments. Therefore, based on those two items, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for the Blue Lotus Restaurant located at 152 South Mesa. And Lin Phan Tang is present as the applicant and as is Jerry, the owner of Dragon Treasure, in case the council should have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Did the applicant want to present? And did you guys have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. All right. So with this, we're going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to this?
Excited. Yeah.
I don't know how Jerry passed the test. Pretty sketchy, Jerry.
All right, if I'm not hearing any questions, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the issuance of a hotel and restaurant malt vent, vent vinous and spirituous liquor license for Blue Lotus Vietnamese Restaurant LLC, doing business as Blue Lotus Vietnamese Restaurant located at 152 South Mesa Street, formerly Coco's.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, W, would you please poll council?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Permit.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Thank you.
I like it.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our second quasi judicial hearing. And that is ordinance 2024-07. It's a second reading, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta, zoning approximately 5.07 acres of property located at 614 Raptor Road to a planned unit development zone, GeoFlats PUD. And we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As was mentioned, given this staff presentation, an ordinance 2024-07, while I share my screen here, this is a, a second reading of this ordinance with the first reading happening on February 6th. And just to put on the record, there was an error on the agenda item to set the public hearing date for tonight. And that was mentioned in the public hearing that night to inform the public and anyone interested in this application, that instead of having, having the second reading on February 20th, the second reading would be happening tonight, March 5th. As kind of a dual communication tool that we have used in the past, we did resend out public notice postcards to all the property owners that received them originally, as well as the legal notice that's required by our city clerk with the adoption of the first reading of the ordinance. So tonight, we're hearing an application for a, to rezone C2 property to a planned unit development zone on approximately 5.07 acres. And so planned unit developments are written in our code as the purpose of this chapter, the PUD chapter, is to encourage flexibility and innovation and developments in exchange for a community benefit that could not otherwise, or yeah, otherwise be realized through the strict adherence of the code. So these are always unique. Each one is different from one another. And so tonight, we're hearing a preliminary PUD plan to essentially just rezone the five acres. On January 24th of 2023, the city council and the planning commission held a joint workshop to discuss this application. This is an optional step as the concept plan and only applies to planning to develop, excuse me, to plan unit developments. The discussion was essentially just like a joint workshop with the planning commission, talking about the idea, getting non-binding feedback, and then whether or not the applicant wants to move forward with an application, which we're here tonight. That's highlighted in the gray. This step is required and it went to the planning commission in, or January, on January 30th. And as part of this PUD, the city, the city council needs to enact an ordinance which you're hearing tonight. Then the next step, typically there are subdivision applications, but this one's a planning to development, site design review application. And so essentially the final PUD plan would have kind of the site design review elements to it. We send it out to review agencies garner feedback, the design of the property in accordance with the zoning, the PUD guide, which we're talking about tonight. Touch on legal notice. Like I said before, special legal notice was sent after the first reading to inform the public of tonight's meeting. But public notices required to happen 15 days prior to the first public hearing. And those were all accomplished in mid-December prior to the January planning commission meeting. Legal notice postcards go out 350 feet from the subject property. And then we place a legal notice posting on the property along all adjacent rights of ways in a conspicuous area. It's, it's blue color, difficult to miss when you're out there, but when it's windy like it had been, sometimes those do get knocked over. But nonetheless, it's been out there for a little while informing the public that, hey, we're about to make some decisions on this property. Here's an aerial photograph on the right. It's immediately west of the La Quinta. On the corner of Raptor Road and Highway 340 is a complex that has a Starbucks, a dental office and a Jimmy John's. And then the McDonald's is adjacent to that on the south. So to give you a little proximity, that is the location of this, the subject property. It's currently zoned, commercial two or C2 is the acronym in our code that allows a whole plethora of different land uses, including residential and commercial, quite a bit of different land uses surrounding this as well. So the concept plan, just to kind of remind everyone, these are some of the highlights from the, the meeting and the meeting minutes is the public benefit of childcare versus parks, open space and trails, which we typically see with planning developments. The impetus was of that was that we have the beach or the lagoon property nearby with many trails and the state park nearby as well. The council and the planning commission both, you know, supported that if a new application were be submitted, a parking study be accompanied with that. And that has been supplied and reviewed by staff and is in the council packet. The architecture to be in line with the geologic features such as the book cliffs and the monument to kind of blend in as the building heights would be elevated to hopefully blend in and, and help with some visuals from the Highway 340. The beauty of this, the state patrol building that's directly south of that was mentioned is that some of that architecture really found attractive and something that could be implemented for some residential uses. And then there was no concerns with the amount of density that kind of was talked about or thrown about. So that's kind of a recap of why we're here tonight. This application is 2023-37. And the location is 614 Raptor Road. Already touched on some of those other items, but we do have a representative from TWG who traveled in here tonight to be with us and explain the project. And yeah, so to jump into the development plan itself, there's four, four multifamily buildings, kind of clustered on the north and east sides of it and maximum height of four stories. One clubhouse proposed. And again, to remind everyone that this is a zoning application, we're not talking about the design standards or anything like that. And the next step would be a site design review. And again, the concept plan was discussed January 24th, 2023. Some of the elements included in this application, parking, the, the reason we bring it up is because it was talked about at the concept plan and accompanied with a, a parking study. So the parking study for market rate rental proposed in this application, if affordable housing isn't successfully accompanied or accomplished on this through development grants and state funding, is a market rate rental product of 1.32 parking spaces per unit. And the parking study showed 180 units as kind of a basis, what we could potentially see. And so you could see 238 spaces, which is supported in the parking study. I have up there the city of Fruta standards. They're fairly close in proximity when you average them out. The average in the downtown mixed use core is 1.4. Affordable housing is less than that. So they are relatively close, but when you add up the total number of units, you do get, get further apart. But the study, we feel like, has really associated itself with the meaning of what affordable or rental housing does generate. And so we feel like that number is sufficient in parking spaces. As we go through the code requirements for planning at developments, there's quite a few to, to think about and address. And staff has reviewed these and accompanied staff recommendation in the staff report, but we find that the proposed land uses that are supported in C2 that are around there currently and what are proposed with this PUD are compatible with surrounding area. Having rentals, especially affordable housing rentals or just market rate rentals near employment centers and public transit, we feel like is a great location for something like this to be proposed. As well as it's close to the interstate, you can get on the interstate really quick to, you know, if there is a job that they have in Grand Junction or somewhere else, they don't have to travel all the way through town just to get to the interstate. They can quickly jump on 340 and the interstate to get there. So we feel like the, the area itself is compatible and, and does meet, you know, some of our comprehensive plan statements addressing or addressing affordable housing. So we feel like that's a pretty strong with this application. And then the, the site design review, there are some elements in the application that are requesting a deviation from some of our design standards. We've looked at those in detail. We know that the applicant has, has really looked at those as well, which is why they're all addressed in the PUD guide. There's one element in the PUD guide that we feel like should be, the deviation recommended from the PUD guide should be reverted back to what our, our design standards do say. And that's really just having the architectural elements on all four sides of the building, they all be wrapped around. What our zoning standard or our design standards say is if it can be viewed from a street, then it needs to be, you know, you have to have that wrapped around. You're going to be able to see all four sides of these buildings from Jurassic, Raptor, and then another one on the west side that'll be constructed that's supported in our, our transportation plan. So that's been agreed upon with the applicant. They're supportive of reverting that deviation back to what our design standards say in our land use code. And so we feel like the design standards absolutely can be met in our address in the PUD guide and in our land use code. So it'll be kind of two-fold review of that. And then compatibility, again, we feel like, you know, this application and this, this location for affordable housing or market rate housing is, is a good spot for that to happen. So staff has reviewed both of those, recommend approval based on the approval criteria and the plan unit development section and section 13 of our design standards. Review comments and public comments, no review agency needs to comment on a zoning application. That's strictly apparent to the city of Fruta. And then the site design review application, as you guys have been involved in in the past, is definitely an application where we have review agency comments. U Water, Excel Energy, CDOT, those will all be included to ensure utilities and services are provided to this project. And then no written public comments have been received regarding this application, nor were any received at the planning commission meeting on January 30th. Planning commission did recommend approval of this application with the conditions listed in the staff report. And they also included a reverter clause to go back to the C2 zone district if affordable housing or market rate housing project is not able to come to market. And so we feel like that's agreed upon by us as staff and the applicant and the, that in the recommendation. And they recommended a vote of five to zero in support of this application. And again, no written public comments or comments were received at this meeting. Here's the conditions and recommendations. These are located on page 158 of the council packet. In a nutshell, I have touched on the reverter clause to go back to the commercial land uses and the design standards. One of the elements, number two, again, this was brought up in the concept plan at the workshop, was the proposal of supporting local childcare facilities in the city of Fruta. We've gone back, we've talked with the applicant and the applicant's representative. Housing and, or childcare itself is difficult to construct and operate and maintain onsite, which is why the cash-in lieu fee, instead of providing onsite childcare facility, has been proposed. And this is a kind of a voluntary exchange, obviously, for a public benefit that we've seen as something that needs to, to be addressed is the, the hundred, or the $100,000 childcare cash-in fee collected at site plan approval. So they'll know well in advance, you know, when site plan approval is. And then that could trigger a whole bunch of other things. But that's been agreed upon by the applicant's representative and the, the property owner's representative here. And then that any, if the PUD guide is approved with these conditions and staff can administratively review any modifications, minor modifications, placement of buildings, parking spaces, open space or anything like that, that we can administratively review that and approve it without taking it back through a public hearing process. And that can be reviewed by the community development director. With these conditions, the exhibit B that's attached to the, the ordinance, there may be some changes relevant to that. So approval, if conditions are placed on it, some of those elements in the PUD guide as an exhibit may need to be modified, like the design standards element and the reverter clause, that's in the ordinance. And then the staff recommendation, we do recommend approval, finding that it meets the approval criteria in section 17.19 of our land use code. And with that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you said the applicant's representative is here. Would you like to present or add anything? All right.
The sign says no phones.
Oh, you're fine.
I'll put it in airplane mode. Just want to make sure I say everything that I meant to say. And also, how do I get? And also, how do I get?
All right.
Henry really said the technical stuff, but um.
Did you want to say your name for the record, just so we got?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Megan Adams. I'm the regional development director for TWG. I lead our team for the entire western half of the US. I'm happy to be here with you. Our representative is Carrie McCool. She presented to planning commission. Um, she was double booked tonight, so she couldn't be here with us. On the phone, we should have Aldo. Um, if he could also be admitted to speak, he's with Studio Architecture. Um, he will be able to answer the technical things that I, I can't. So TWG is actually headquartered in Indianapolis, but we're a national developer. I'm actually based, my home base is currently in Washington state. Uh, we also have a developer in Colorado. So we're, we're kind of everywhere, but we're really unique, and I'll explain that in a little bit. So I, I focus on affordable housing and workforce housing. I'm not really interested in developing it as, you know, a box store or commercial. This is really, 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 really what we're trying to do is housing. So just a little bit about myself, because I'm new to you. TWG does own the land, so we are technically part of the community, but I recognize that I don't live here. Um, and my, I'm an atypical developer. I did an undergrad degree a long time ago in environmental science. I didn't like developers, okay? But I, over time, I realized if I'm going to make change, I need to be in the driver's seat. And so I earned a master's degree in real estate development. And uh, I have done lots of other things. I have a minor in outdoor recreation. I did uh graduate work in art and dance, and so I'm well-rounded and I just uh respect a community when I come to you. Um, or I've been with TWG for four years. Solid work in my butt off. I need a vacation. My boss is listening. No, but I love it. Uh, before that, I worked for five years for a nonprofit developer locally based in Washington uh that also does supportive services. So I, I understand the full picture of affordable from zero percent A M I all the way up to when we serve workforce, you know, a hundred and twenty percent A M I. So that's, that's how I'm coming to you with this. Now let's see if I can figure out how to go to the next slide. There we go. Thanks. Okay, so Carrie did make this presentation. Uh, so she wanted us to talk about where we've been with this site. We originally had this site. Well, just re- just remember in your memory of Henry's little site picture. Uh, we had it for a Lytec project, a low income housing tax credit project. We did all the work. We applied for the funding. Another project was ready to go first. Um, and so we kind of reset the situation. As a developer, we always want to have plan A, B, C, and D uh for risk and just for, to make sure we're still developing. Um, so this is like our plan B, and it's actually pretty cool, and it aligns really well with Prop one, two, three. And I'll speak to that in a little bit. Again, uh, TWG's, we have the greatest team. I, I can't speak highly enough. Um, we've, we've had to be flexible over the last few years. A lot of stuff went down for everyone. Uh, but we still, we stuck together. We have specialists in all the things, finance, construction, design. This map is already out of date. We've since added New Mexico. We're also working on California and Idaho. Cause I just have a lot of energy and I really like being in communities all over. So I keep threatening, I'm going to move out of Washington, so we'll see where I go. This is the uh P U D concept plan. And you can see it has the three stories and the four stories, which really um Henry already talked about. Uh, our Carrie and Aldo, the architect and the consultant, worked really hard for many months on this. This is more technical stuff. I mean, I, I don't want to reiterate too much, but it just talks about how this plan is really drawing on the intent of what you've already created with your comp plan and um your goals. Just density. I mean, he's already said this stuff, so I don't want to keep you. Um, again, the public benefit is so important, so that hundred thousand is going to the childcare center. And I did speak with them um a number of months ago. Um, I think they're ready to go. So the sooner we can go, the sooner we can give them the money. And I, I have done childcare centers onsite with affordable housing. I've done a fourteen thousand square foot Y M C A. We're looking at um a five thousand square foot childcare private facility in San Diego. Um, so I do know how they work together. For this site, we decided it's better if, you know, the childcare needs to be the best place it can be, and maybe this isn't it. Parking, so uh to clarify, we're asking for a blended rate. We don't yet know exactly how many, you know, at sixty percent A M I, how many at ninety percent A M I. And so that's why we're asking for this flexibility of, of a blended rate. You know, maybe half will be the point seven five and half will be the one point three two ratio. Um, and of course, it will be backed up by a final parking um report, and we do a parking management plan. Not sick, I promise. Uh, yes, we, we always do a parking management plan. So for example, it will say in there, you know, tenants are not allowed to store vehicles that aren't working. You need to have the working vehicle. It needs to be in your stall. And, cause we do see it, we see it all. And that's why we have a plan. Uh, there are some traffic improvements that we will do. Which, again, they're technical and they're in the reports. Um, we usually provide onsite amenities. So in the P U D, we've said we've only done two, but honestly, we'll probably do at least four of these. Uh, the playground, the community room, we always have, um, you know, whatever they can figure out with trails. We've been doing a lot of trails in Colorado onsite and even also in Utah. This is just one example. In Durango, it's under construction. It's a conversion of an old motel. And then we added new units onto the parcel. Um, so super cool situation. It's a partnership with the city. And this is just to show that we, you know, we work well and we're, we're creative. This one's in Washington. It was actually a partnership with the Kalispel tribe of Indians. Uh, they own the land and it was, um, they wanted actually more market rate side, uh but we did do twenty percent at eighty percent A M I. And that's out in Spokane. This one, I think Carrie put on just to show we are also cool. We can do like boxy stuff as well, not just pitched roofs. Um, but yeah, I have more kind of modern style. We do a lot of different things. Yeah, they, they voted all yes, and um they encouraged, you know, more sustainability, desire for a new bus stop. Uh, they liked that we're supporting childcare enhancements in the community. Uh, they did discuss the parking. And they requested prairie dog resettlement, which we've already looked into and we had a connection. Uh, it's close to my heart, so I was, I already emailed them the next day and was like, okay, when do you do it? When do I need to notify you? And how do you make sure they all get out? Again, that, you know, there's a break. They'd do it late summer. I'm like, well, they're going to come back in fall, won't they, before you start construction in December? I can't, I can't fathom little creatures like, you know, with the excavator. I'm like, okay, we have to get you out there twice. So anyway, we're going to make sure that's taken care of. Um, I know it's kind of silly, but it's important to me. Uh, and they emphasize high-quality materials and a funky color palette. So we can definitely do all of that. Okay, this is just reiteration. It's, it's promoting, you know, Fruta in motion and the comp plan, and it's in compliance with all, all the things that you've said you wanted already. Uh, we did ask for the reverter clause, which is a little unique. It's important to me because, you know, it's zoned now for, for what it is. We, somebody could just build what, what it is for there. We want to do housing. Um, and so if we get rid of all the commercial zoning, what happens if, for some reason, Prop one, two, three doesn't have any more funding or, or something happens or we can't get more Lytec? My job is to do housing, so that'll be really hard for me if it doesn't happen, but just in case, this reverter clause kind of says, well, maybe someday in the future, we could sell it if we, if we weren't able to do the housing there. I added this one. I just learned about this a few days ago with the Prop one, two, three um new presentation. If we get, we want to try to get the Prop one, two, three equity for this project. And part of their program is super cool, and it's not something I've seen in another state. They are requiring sort of a tenant equity vehicle. And I don't one hundred percent understand it, but I understand it enough to say that it's how the tenants who live there can actually earn equity over time. They don't know if it's going to be a monthly sort of um check back to the tenant, or if it's a yearly thing, they're still working that out. But it is, as the property earns income that's above the expenses, it goes back to the residents to kind of, well, maybe it's for a safety account, or maybe it's to build equity or whatever. And that's a super cool part of this program. And we're trying to, we're going to apply for this funding. I think it's because my fingers are cold. Um, there's our contact info, and that's my last slide.
All right. Does anybody else from your team want to say anything before we open up for public comment?
Although.
I have nothing else to add. Wonderful job, Megan.
All right. Well, then what we're going to do is we're going to open up to public comment, and then we'll come back for questions and comments. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now's your opportunity. You'd have to come up to the microphone, and then we'd ask that you state your name and address for the record, and that you'd limit your comments to three minutes.
Dustin Patrick, five, three, two, Raptor Road, Unit B. So I'm just curious about the um hundred thousand dollar childcare thing. I just don't understand that. It's the first time I'm really aware of this, so I don't know about the postcard thing. Maybe I get a lot of mail, so. Um, but I'm just curious about that, uh what really that means, and um that's my only question.
All right. Thank you, Dustin. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council.
That was my question as well. I'm
Yeah, I think.
What that looks like. Um, I'm not sure if that's you, Mike, that can answer that.
Yeah, I, I can, I can take a first stab and then I invite Dan or Megan if they want to add to it, but uh, it's not a requirement of, of the project, so it's, it's uh a portion when somebody uh proposes to do, to do a plan unit development, they can propose different ways to uh create a community benefit in addition to the development that they are, are doing. And uh, they proposed a hundred thousand dollars to go towards a uh to help with the expansion of uh seats, or I guess we could call it seats for childcare of an existing uh lo- of an, of a local business in Fruta. So uh, right now, they're working with the potential uh potential party that could expand with the help of those funding to add more uh additional childcare uh capabilities.
Do we know?
A partner has been identified with that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, uh, council member Miller, as you recall, when we I'm Dan Karas. I'm the planning director. Originally, when Megan and I started working together on this, we were applying for the stronger communities infrastructure grant. Part of the grant stipula- stipulations that we thought would strengthen our application would be to promote childcare. So that was one of the things that was in the list. It was something that we were contemplating. She wanted to do workforce or affordable housing. We wanted to partner. We, I think, went after the whole uh max amount, which I believe was four million dollars. We were unsuccessful, but we still found merit in, uh, in continuing to pursue this. Uh, especially with a lot of the other funding sources that have been identified with Prop one, two, three, which you mentioned earlier, but that's kind of the scoop on how it started, is the council, uh, uh, you know, many months back, uh approved by resolution for us to submit uh stronger communities infrastructure grant. And that's kind of where the childcare component came from originally.
To be clear, this is I'm volunteering this. It's not actually a requirement related to the rezone.
It's not an exaction at all. Yeah. That is correct.
But it's an exchange for a different option, like you were saying, in the exchange for like the open spaces trail things, Greg.
No, they had in their notes that it was in lieu of uh childcare facility. Yeah, that's what it said on their slide.
A fee in lieu. And so typically, what would end up happening is uh they would have to provoke, they would have to provide the childcare onsite. You know, we were uh unsuccessful in being able to do that just with how the site was uh laid out and the units that they were trying to build. So we proposed to build it within a quarter mile of the site, which was something we got questions on from Dola when we actually submitted, but uh, but that's kind of the scoop behind it.
So is that, is that we're moving forward with a childcare facility within a quarter mile of there? Is that what you just basically said, that we're trying to make that happen?
That was specific to the application. I don't think that the, the distance requirement is now as big of a deal since we were unsuccessful in getting the grant, but it is within Fruta, yes.
Not specific to this application, specific to the application for stronger communities
Okay.
grant that we went after.
Are there counts?
Grant opportunities like on the horizon that we could?
So proposition one, two, three funding that um Megan mentioned is what we're working with them on, uh seeking that type of funding uh through the state, and that's where we uh joined uh one, two, three. If you remember, you two, you all took action and we to to, I, I think it's a hundred and thirty-three affordable units in a three-year period, and we're at fifty, you know, that are being constructed currently, so. But opting into that allows us to go after funding mechanisms to partner for and this is a project that we're looking at trying to receive that funding to partner with.
I didn't realize that also applied to like the childcare end of it, so that's great.
And I might have completely missed the mark earlier on the answer of like, do we have impact fees for childcare? We do not. You're right. And so we do have fee in lieu for parks, open space, and trails. So we do have language that supports other things that would be dedicated in lieu of paying an impact fee. This is not one of those things. It's completely voluntary. It's something that when Megan and I were kind of imagining how this site could develop, could be a uh an added benefit for the residences with both the housing and the childcare.
Thank you. That's an important distinction for me.
And this may not be important to this conversation, but I feel like um councillor Miller asked. You said this hundred thousand would go to a current childcare center to expand it?
To a childcare center in Fruta to expand or add childcare.
That childcare center.
We were working with stronger communities. We were working with a particular
Sure, yeah.
But it's not a guarantee that they would be the one.
That um childcare center's been identified already. That's, is that true?
We, we were working with someone, and we do have somebody in mind, but I think that, you know, like Mike said, you know, we're gonna, if that falls through, we're gonna have to come up with a process on how we're going to evaluate that, and that will have to come back to council.
And the, the reason why the center we were working with that we were working with them, uh, a local group that was going to expand if we received the stronger communities funding. So at this point in time, we did not receive those funds. So now we would be looking at how this hundred thousand could help in the same way and with whether it's an existing group or a new group in, but in the Fruta community.
So this hundred thousand dollars is, comes to the city. And we work with uh an entity to show the expansion and, and help them do that. It's not a Correct. An outside of us. Okay. Correct. And we would have to stop that.
I actually have heartburn over that. Oh, I'm I, I appreciate what they're doing. What I am uncomfortable with, I understand how we got here. What I'm uncomfortable with is now the city has this hundred thousand and the city is now responsible or working with an existing business or choosing an or working with an existing business or choosing an existing business or helping foster an exist or business to come to the area. I would actually feel more comfortable if this development said, we will do a hundred thousand and we will do this on our own. I feel like this puts the city in a position where we have to kind of pick the winners and losers of who we're going to work with on this.
I can appreciate that and support that. Yeah.
I I do. So I believe that was kind of why we were all hitting around at where was it going? Because
And I want to be clear, I love the concept.
I do. Yeah, it's a great concept, but it's gotta be.
It's more on the administrative side that it gives me a little bit of pause.
But then we get to decide what that hundred thousand dollars goes to enhance.
Yeah.
More leveraging.
But do we, and do we still have to, I mean, is that something? I just feel like, oh, we're going to pick this business versus this business. And that for me is outside of my comfort zone of what our role of local municipal government is.
I I think whatever that's successful, I bet it's going to be a project, like you say, that we're going to have to work and push to make happen. It's what I'm worried is if it if it's done privately outside, go down the street, hey, would you take this hundred thousand dollars and do good with it? Yeah, sure. And then it turns into.
But is it our job as local government to do that? I I like, you know, I just, I I it's outside of my comfort.
The private market's not working.
But we have a developer here that's willing to invest in the private market and let it be their investment. Where they get to choose where it goes versus I mean, I, I, once again, I want to be careful. Let me try, like, I think this is great and I applaud what you're doing. It's just how it gets executed.
What's what's the the come from besides the grant? It's part of the PUD process of some community contribution. And they're proposing to give a hundred thousand dollars to childcare development. And I support the idea of letting the private market deal with other private market to make some improvements going on. And if it's something that there's a little committee and we just have representation and make sure that they follow their commitment or in some sort. Otherwise, I'm, I agree with you, Matt, that we we stay, stay out of it and just let the private market do it and see what they can do with the hundred grand to truly improve. And not just give a a one time bonus to someone. And that like, don't be very
Physically responsible.
No.
We give it to this company. Do they succeed? Do they not succeed? And now that onus is on us.
Yeah.
I'd have another question related, Mike, on that is, I know we've done some other pass through grants before. I know for, you know, Family Health West and that. Would there be anything like that that would help facilitate some of this? Well, because I think the process is what I think the challenge is for council.
Once, yeah, I think this is a great idea. I understand how we got here, which was part of the original proposal. That didn't happen. I greatly appreciate that. We want to keep the spirit of this going. So.
Was there something like that that we could work with?
Yes.
Developers and say this, you know, hey, we can work with you on getting grants with this because it is a partnership with the city.
Right.
How does that relate to getting it done?
Yeah, from a, from a staff perspective, it's not our interest in picking winners or losers with it and applying it to ensure that it goes to to childcare. Once they receive their site plan, that's when the money is either goes directly to somebody that they're working with for childcare and then we're we're good. But if there isn't a deal at that point in time, there's no way to hold them to the hundred thousand going to childcare. I mean, they may still deliver and do that, but we don't have a mechanism after that point in time. So if it did turn into something where we were to receive it and deploy it for childcare, we would be looking to a partner like the Business Incubator Center, like we've worked with in the past with other loans. I do not, this is not something we have their approval for now, but they've worked with us in the past of, you know, providing some kind of the pass through grant where someone could apply to that entity to make the decision of of something like that. We would have to work with them on that. The hope would be that this is deployed that there is a partner identified and it could go straight to them and not come through the city as well. But
Mike, you're you're referencing the revolving loan fund that the city did with the incubator centers.
Revolving loan fund, we did, we also did funding similar temporarily during the COVID pandemic where they ran or they administered grants that we provided the funds for.
Oh, I guess if I'm hearing this correctly, we'd need to get in touch with the incubator center to see if what that would look like if we wanted to do another agreement where they would manage it and it would take it off the city's hands.
We may be the fiduciary agent of it, but we're not the ones determining where and how it's spent.
Right. Who gets it? Because it could be two or three organizations that get partial money.
Correct. I'm more comfortable with us being fiduciary agent.
If I may ask a question for clarification, Mike or Dan, am I hearing that the hundred thousand dollars would be paid at site plan approval unless the developer already had in place an agreement with a childcare facility or provider to basically provide them the hundred thousand dollars to expand. Is that right?
And Mary Elizabeth, would you state your name just so we have it on the side?
Sorry about that. Mary Elizabeth Geiger, City Attorney. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's correct, Mary Elizabeth.
I think that the the other important point is I think you're seeing both the city and the developer trying to not get in the childcare business. I mean, that is the intent here. So I mean, that was important to Megan and TWG when we spoke about it. Certainly is important to us.
So what I'm hearing is that once the agreement, the PUD thing is set, then we don't have any way to see the final hundred thousand dollars come through. Is that what, is that correct in that assessment? Or are they gonna, if we don't accept a check or that at that time, then there's no mechanisms in place for us to follow through with that, how that's spent or or what happens with that.
Correct. I mean, to an extent, correct, because this is not a requirement of this development. So if they did not have the hundred thousand, we would still be going through this process recommending the approval because it meets all the other pieces. So this is something that they are offering to the community. And I think if you want to state that we're in your if you're so inclined to approve tonight for their PUD, you could state that we're not the fiduciary and that we work out a way to to avoid that piece. Or that we are the, sorry, I said that wrong, Matthew, but.
We are, we can be the fiduciary.
Right.
But if I understood Mary Elizabeth correctly, if before the signing, if they say, oh, we found an organization we like, here's a hundred thousand dollars.
Done.
Then we're out of it altogether.
Right. So I I guess one thing I'd like to ask Dan is right now, the condition of approval be is the hundred thousand dollar childcare cash and leave fee to be paid upon site plan approval. But what I'm hearing is it might not necessarily be paid if that agreement with the developer, excuse me, between the developer and a third party has already been worked out. So it seems to me that might need a little more editing on language because since it's not a requirement of the city code, it is something that I understand the developer wants to offer to try to help and offset the childcare challenges. But it doesn't necessarily come to the city. I, so I guess also, you know, calling it cash and lieu, maybe we, you know, want to rewrite that just a little bit. Dan.
Oh, but correct me if I'm wrong. On a normal PUD, we could say we want so many trails or so many, you know, so much acreage and parks and that. And then that is written into the PUD.
That was the the point that I was going to make is it's, they're asking for special zoning, you know, so we talk about like the code as if it's just a a minimum specification. That's true, but they're also deviating from that in in other ways. But I think this can be modified to essentially be deployed prior to site plan approval or, you know, used as a pass through where the city is not a fiduciary of the hundred thousand dollars. And that would be, I think, cover and capture the spirit of the discussion. Part of my heartache with that and you're a wonderful person, I'm sure, but part of, if part of the deal is, oh, we're, we're going to give a hundred thousand dollars to benefit a daycare facility. It's it's not necessarily in the best interest to just spend time trying to make sure that this goes to the right place. It's going to do the most public benefit. It's even going to be, the daycare is even going to be in business in a year. Their job is to just write the hundred thousand dollar check and give it. So that, I guess that's my only concern with it, just like happening before is it's done, but we have no teeth of what level of quality it's done in, I guess. I don't know if that comes across correctly, but.
So I want to make sure you're understanding. I mean, they could, in theory, just write a check and whatever happens, it could, great, three kids have perfect. It's not a huge community benefit where in terms of trying to leverage it to do the most good is the concern.
I would agree with that because there, it's a great idea.
Yes.
Again, a great, we're very appreciative of your suggestion. But yes, I mean, there's no guarantee in how this is worded, that it would even increase the offering of childcare, like a hundred thousand dollars could go towards all sorts of things that a daycare preschool could be in need of, and it not actually increase the offering to how many spaces they're being filled. So in that regard, when we don't have any say, then that that doesn't help us accomplish the best good.
Right. But is it our responsibility to do that?
I mean, when you look at it, it's not written quite this way, but if it was written as a condition of, then it would all under our purview.
I, it it feels like when we first start talking about this, there were other entities also trying to figure out how to crack this nut. And this hundred thousand dollars was going to be part of something that a community solution could be found for that.
I don't get it. Kind of just like the housing, like, you know, that's a very needed community resource, as is childcare. And we're in a vast childcare desert right now. And it's something that is on the radar of every municipality in Colorado right now. I mean, it's big conversations happening. So if it's not, then there's a lot of misunderstanding that it's I don't know. I I feel like it is something that we could do more with that hundred thousand than if they just wrote the check. Like, I feel like we could do greater good.
We have a housing authority specifically set up to deal with affordable housing, workforce housing. We don't have.
But we have, there are resources that we could tap into. I mean, there, there is a brand new check, I can't remember what the group is in Mesa County, but that's their focus is to bring more childcare to Mesa County and facilitating, you know, ways to make that happen. So I think, you know, we could tap into some of those, some of those resources and and I don't know.
Could we put it in a fund and earmark it and and sort of think about this over the coming months of ways that we can do it without us doing it? You know what I mean? We be the fiduciary.
So I was going to ask, this may not be the right time. Do we need to schedule a workshop? To, I I feel a little bit under the gun here because we do have some differences of opinions here. And I understand there's the deadline to get this done.
Right. So so I guess that would be my question with procedure. So tonight with what's on here, how would this fit in the future? Planning for this, Mary Elizabeth?
Sure. So I think a couple of things. One, we can modify this language. I think what I'm kind of hearing is the majority of council is not keen on the idea that this hundred thousand could be paid out straight from the developer to an entity with kind of no, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars to an existing facility to buy all new furniture. And that wouldn't really achieve kind of what the goal or thought process has been about this of actually creating more spaces for childcare. So you know, maybe right, re-modify this condition to a hundred thousand dollars, you know, childcare cash and lieu paid to the city upon site plan approval for the city to act as the fiduciary agent with and work with a third party to create, you know, a grant program or something like, something like that. So that's kind of, that's one option. Second option is if this is something that's really important to majority of council, but folks aren't sure philosophically about kind of how you want to address it, you can continue this hearing to a later date. And if you want to have a a discussion about the city's council, the city's role with regard to childcare, you do that in the interim.
Let me, let me interrupt you for a second. So because once we approve, if we approve the PUD tonight and don't continue this, then everything else goes through staff review. Is that correct?
What do you mean, everything else?
So the, once we approve the PUD, then all the development in that doesn't come back to council, it's going to go through staff review, administrative.
Site plan goes through staff, Dan, that's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay, just go ahead, continue. I just want to clarify that.
No, that, that, sure, that's fine. You know, the other thing is, is just, you know, bear in mind, somebody can put a motion on the table, on the table and see where it goes. I guess that's the third option.
Things that are kind of brewing in my head is like, I I guess I'm looking at like GJEAP when they offer a grant. They, the the grant is that if you meet certain obligations, you get money. And for example, that you add so many daycare seats. I think I'm, I definitely want to stay out of everything as 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 you're saying, Matt. And then I don't know if that's just an option that we could have. And it might be at a workshop to just to form up details, but it's like, if we can help get that to show, I guess I say something like that to show benefit of of the facility or the money used because, you know, worst case scenario, you hate for it to go to a daycare facility and the owner just takes a hundred thousand dollar bonus and goes home. That's where it's like, I I kind of see something like with GJEAP that if we can help facilitate utilization of that in our community through like GJEAP, what they do for businesses, like you will get this grant if you show that you hire five and you retain five new positions this year and five more the following year, you can apply for an additional grant.
Would people feel more comfortable if it's the city receives the hundred? First of all, this is a great problem to have. So, you know, let's start there. But if the city receives the money, you know, and is obligated to work with a third party to determine how those funds are best utilized. So that means we become the fiduciary duty, but we're also saying we're not going to be the ones to figure out how to leverage this. We will work with an outside party, whether it's BIC or somebody like that.
Yeah.
We help to the guidelines of.
Correct. So it gets us out of picking the winners and, you know, who gets it. We guarantee that it will go into the community and we're saying we're going to go to outsiders to figure out how best to leverage that.
Well, especially like.
Like what Mary Elizabeth said about.
Yeah.
Which I think that fits exactly what she said.
Well, and especially if if this group that Amy's speaking about, that they they might be worth looking into and and partnering with them on it. I think that it just for to get through tonight, what she was saying of of putting it earmarking it, putting it and grant form later where we can have a workshop or we could talk about what we want to do with it. Makes sense, but I think if we can word that to clarify that we're going to put the hundred thousand from this and it's going to get put aside, we're going to do a workshop working with a third party. Hopefully figuring out a grant program. And then that could get us past this part of it to some degree in a better way that Mary Elizabeth would clarify how to word.
Correct. I I, I mean, I personally would not recommend continuing the hearing or holding the development up. Yeah, I just to, if if you, because it's not that you are, I'm not hearing that you don't want the money to go to a legitimate reason for childcare, but figuring out, we can figure all that out and we can, we can set it aside. We won't, we don't get the money tonight. Like, there's still plenty of time before that we could work out that process before we would take, potentially take collection of of those funds. So I mean, that would be, that would be my.
Makes the most sense. And then we would just direct staff to to put it on a workshop later and deal with it. Yeah. Yeah. The first one that she said, exactly how that.
So now I have to remember what I said.
Do we need to change it? Or can we just do that?
Would feel more comfortable.
You wanted to ask, the way she said it before was perfect. Henry's got it. He's thrown under the bus there, Henry. He's throwing under the bus there, Henry.
I think we've got the childcare hundred thousand resolved. Are there, so again, we're here for the P U D and that, that was one of the things of this, but are there any other things in the P U D, um, guide that anybody had any questions or comments on? Matthew?
Uh, reading through the notes, uh, and I didn't quite understand it, but normal flat surfaces, you can't have a flat surface. I think it was over eight hundred square feet. And they're also looking for variance to twenty, I'm going from memory, twenty-four hundred square feet. Can you help me walk through? Cause when I read that, my concern was we end up with big, huge, flat surfaces. Is that a, is, does anybody else in council have that concern? My, like the only one that nerdy.
I definitely want to understand all the variant, because P U D is what a variance from the code. What's all that's being applied for? Like what's the variant, all the variances? If that's one of them, great. I want to hear about it.
I think Henry had that up there on slide.
Yeah, that's what Henry covered earlier. So we can go.
Yes. So the, these are going to be fairly large, uh, buildings and to have natural breaks in the building itself for the square footage of, of any of those areas, like a window would be a break. And so now you're, now you have, um, those areas that, that might not have just a blank wall. There'd be a window.
Is that to like help accommodate elevator stacks and stuff like that? I mean, I, I, this is not my area of expertise. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. The, the blank wall prevention is to do just that, to prevent just like a blank wall of, of nothing. We want to see some design elements included um, in the design standards, which is kind of the architectural features that we have laid out, whether they're wrapped around all sides, like they're stone or stucco or different colors, or just even bulb outs that give an impression of, um, some, some scale. So we see that obviously these are going to be large buildings. And so increasing some of the, the standards for the blank wall prevention, I think we're not even going to hit, but, um, when it comes to some of the design standards, we do want to prevent, you know, large chunks of just blank space that really are just nothing.
So as a reference, because we don't have any facilities like, buildings like this here currently, is that a fairly standard accommodation when we look at this size of, uh, building, overall building?
Yeah, it, it is. When you take into context, this, the total size. And some of the other elements that we do take into consideration is whether it's a commercial, um, building, like a storefront, retail or restaurant versus kind of a residential component. Um, so yeah, we, we do. I'm trying to find that section and that you are referencing that they're deviating from just to.
I, it's on page eight of the, page two oh five of our packet. But I, I did appreciate that there, that it was mentioned in there that the applicant must demonstrate that the design has been adapted to fit for its unique location and historical context. Um, Colorado National Monument Grand Valley and Desert Environment. So that any of those, you know, flat surfaces would just be concrete, you know, they can't just be gray blocks. It also mentioned that public art and murals can be used to minimize that, which, you know, that would definitely fit in our.
Well, then the kids.
Yeah, the kids want to do the murals.
That mural they did over what?
Yeah, it's great. Yeah.
I, I just want to make sure. So I'm hearing is because we're looking at three or four story building, taking into account for elevator stacks and stuff like that, that is a normal accommodation for something like that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we summarize what all the variances from the code that they're, they're asking for?
Sure. They're, they're primarily related to the design standards, um, where, where they're deviated from in, in their P U D guide. When it goes, when it comes to kind of the deviations in the density and dimensional standards, the chart that says, you know, your setbacks or your building heights or your densities, um, there, there's some deviations there as well. The deviations proposed for the building height, uh, the restriction right now in the C two zone is thirty-five. Uh, what they'd like to go to is four stories. The four stories would essentially be equivalent to what the La Quinta is built out at, at building height. We did, we did look at that today, just to confirm. The La Quinta is forty-five feet tall from, uh, the finished, um, grade. So then essentially like their parking lot grade to the top of the building that you would see from the roundabout. So that, that's forty-five feet. And in our code, the four stories, that's allowed in like our DMU, uh, area that, that we already, um, are supportive of is forty-eight feet as the maximum height when you add up the ground floor and the three levels above it. So the deviation would be, uh, in accordance with, with those. Let's see. The, um, the deviation in the side yard setback, um, there's no deviation proposed. The interior side yard, right now it's a ten foot for primary structures. The deviation is fourteen feet. So not really a deviation, but more, um, more or less of that. Minimum front yard is supportive in the code is zero feet. Um, but the deviation proposed is fourteen. So there'll be, there'll be a fourteen foot multi-purpose easement. That's where that fourteen foot setback comes in. So not going to be encroaching in there. Yeah. No new lot lines proposed, uh, either with this, no, no subdivision. Was there something specific that?
Yeah, I was, no, I appreciate all that. I think the big thing for me was, the biggest thing that you talked about was height. So when you say La Quinta is forty-five, is that from the, the main roof? Because they're, they have like a little spire section that's taller. Is it, that's the forty-five?
Yes.
So what's the main roof to?
Uh, forty-three. There's another, no, forty-two. There was a three foot. They did go through a variance process. And they were granted a variance to have the main roof line at forty-two and the spire or kind of the tower looking thing at forty-five feet.
And so in our standard DMU is with a four story is forty-eight and that's what they're, so yes, you're asking for a de- deviation because we're, we're changing zones and stuff, but really it's, that's not really a deviation from our land use code if, if they were, uh, what did I say?
DMU.
Yeah. So there's really no deviation there because it's, it's in our standard land use codes for, um, for mixed.
I think what Karen's trying to ask is what is the current height for that zone, for the current zone?
The reason I bring up the DMU is it's something that's already in our code that's allowed in the city. And so, um, it's not much of a deviation that you wouldn't see, you know, right here.
No, but what is the distance, I think is, what is for that zone right now, the C two zone? What is that height restriction?
C two is thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So then we're, we're part of this, part of this process is the rezone to.
To allow the buildings to be built up to four, four stories.
Four stories, which in the DMU is forty-eight feet as, as a comparative.
Yes. Yeah.
And where, where is, where are these, there's three story and four story proper, uh, buildings, right? It, what's the, where's the, where are those proposed right now?
So planning, P A, uh, P A A is planning area A, which is the northeast kind of section adjacent.
So it's closer to the La Quinta. The taller stuff, further away is the shorter.
Correct.
Okay. I like that. Is I guess what the, the concern that I have with that is if we build too, too tall, like as you come off the roundabout, it changes the landscape of our community in which you look at right now it's set quite nice that as you look over, as you come over that roundabout and you look over La Quinta, you can still see the beauty of our community. And if you built a ten story building, you sure take a lot away. So that's, that's where, that's where I'm coming from is like, how high do we want? This is a beauty. So we can um, stipulate. And that's where I'm going at is like forty-two or the area right now is forty-two. That's how I look at it is for most of that building height. And this four stories going up to forty-eight.
They're asking for forty-five, wasn't it?
No.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five is what they're asking for?
Yeah.
So this was the feedback you all gave them in the preliminary. And so that's how they designed it to, to meet those.
Okay. So, so the design right now is saying forty-five and no taller.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
And just, just for the record, if you, in the, in the packet, as you go through the staff report, each section has what there, if there's a proposed deviation or not, beginning on that page eight. So it says proposed deviation for each category, none, 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 or the description. So it's all detailed there.
Sorry.
Actually appreciated the way that was laid out.
Yeah, that was great.
Say that again. I was.
I was just saying in the, just for the record, in the, in the staff report, it goes through each section of the requirements and it has proposed deviation, none, proposed deviation, none, or if there is a deviation, it describes in that paragraph uh, beginning on page eight of that staff report as it goes through. So.
What page of the PDF is that? Just so I can review that again.
That. Hold on.
The document, the gray page number?
All right. I just, I just scrolled my document away here.
You're seeing on page two oh seven, two oh eight.
Two oh two.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor.
Two oh one. Yeah, it's just throughout each.
It goes through the whole. Cause it addresses each area of design. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any?
I liked the language that was up there earlier.
So then, um, are we asking Mary Elizabeth to give us a rough?
It was Henry, I think Henry had it up.
Or did you have it up there? All right.
Henry, there it is.
Okay.
And the only thing I would, uh, change on that, Henry, thank you, is to say, to work with an outside third party, uh, agency is a term of art. And so I just don't, don't want to restrict.
That's a good catch. Yeah.
Uh, Mary Elizabeth, just a quick question. Are we putting these in the conditions of approval? Are we putting this in the ordinance? Think it's pretty important that we know the difference.
Sure. Um, well, you guys had it written as conditions of approval, correct?
That would be our preference. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think just leave it, I would say is the same way. I don't see a reason to change it.
Do we need to change the word could to something?
Oh, so the city shall act or will act.
Would act.
It would with a W, right?
Or will act. Yeah.
Will is good.
Will. Sorry. Thank you.
Words written with seven people. Can we make a motion, the top part and just reference as noted in the PowerPoint, updated PowerPoint, or is that a motion?
Well, it will be with the condition. So it already has it in the motion with, uh, look at what is.
Change it with the following conditions, but with the conditions noted on the revised, on the PowerPoint.
Wouldn't you just?
All right.
Hey, Henry, the grammar is freaking out. Please put a period on it.
Uh, what my preference would be not to reference the PowerPoint is, um, you can say the conditions are set forth in the, you know, on page, whatever. Well.
It's on page one fifty-eight.
On page one fifty-eight, um, of the packet with these, with changes to, um, condition number two, to read as follows and just read number two.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm willing to put forth a motion.
All right. Then go ahead.
Uh, one, one quick question before you guys put a motion on the table. Dan, does that work for you?
It does. Yeah. And Megan.
And Megan. Yes, applicant.
All right. Then we'll entertain a motion.
I'm trying not to muck this up. Um, because the applicant meets or can meet, I, uh, can meet the planned unit development approval criteria in section seventeen dot one nine of the fruit of land use code. I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, second reading and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately five point zero seven acres of property located at six fourteen Raptor Road to a planned unit development zone with the, uh, noted conditions, except for line item two B, which should read one hundred thousand childcare cash and lieu fee, uh, be collected at site plan approval. So the city will, will act as the fiduciary agent and work with an outside third party agency on the distribution of the funds.
May I suggest an edit that we delete the, the word agency should not be in there. Third party and outside.
Right. And here it's listed as A, B, C, D. So I'll refer to it as B to B or and or two. Uh, I'll reread that one hundred thousand childcare cash and lieu fee be collected at site plan approval. So the city will act as the fiduciary agent and work with an outside third party on the distribution of the funds. Period.
And you'll have to read A, C, and D as well.
Do I have to read all of them?
Yes.
I didn't know what I was volunteering for. All right. Um, A, remove all commercial land use from the P U D guide. This is part one of that, uh, a, uh, reverter clause be used to revert back to the seat dash two zone if affordable housing or market rate rental housing is not constructed. Uh, line item C, design standard conditions in section seventeen point one three dot zero six zero B one be met as written in the land use code and D, if this P U D guide is approved with these conditions and fully met, then a future site design review application be reviewed administratively unless there is a major modification or change in the application deemed by the community development director. Easy.
Second.
All right. We've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments on this item?
Ever had.
Design, design standards contained, not conditions, just.
Just wanted to say.
Hey, Mary Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said they could just read the motion with all the conditions as stated in the report with the only change to two or B, correct? We don't have to read.
That's correct. But he wrote it all. That's okay, too.
You still make me do that again.
All right. So we, we got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments on this before we call for a motion or for a vote? All right. Hearing none. Uh, W, please poll council.
Counsel Reiman?
Yes.
Counsel Purser?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Well, thanks for being here, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for your patience.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
I think we still are.
Good number nine.
Still have another item.
What am I looking at?
Resolution.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. We're in the administrative agenda. Sorry. I jumped through one. Um, we're in, uh, resolution. Twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city manager to execute the co-op tower facade lease agreement and all documents necessary to effect, uh, effectuate the lease. And we've got our city attorney, Mary Elizabeth Geiger here to present.
Sure. Thank you, mayor and city council members. Uh, so, um, Sparks Fly Limited is under contract to purchase the former co-op building with the tower that's located uh, along highway six and fifty. You know, that's the abandoned grain tower on which the city has historically hung banners. This lease would be to officially reach an agreement with that landowners, um, that when they close to lease the east and west facades of the tower for the city to be able to hang banners, um, promoting the city and, you know, local activities. Uh, this was presented and you guys did discuss this at both the January twenty-third workshop and the February twenty-seventh workshop. Um, the annual payment to Sparks Fly would be twenty-four thousand dollars, which is two thousand dollars a month. And, um, it is a year to year lease. So it's a lease for one year that renews each year for up to fifty years. But the city can terminate it at any time by giving ninety days notice. And these terms and conditions have already been discussed with Sparks Fly. So they have reviewed this draft lease.
All right. So is there, are there any questions related to this item?
Tim Navin with Sparks Fly is here and, uh, I know it asked us if he could make some comments as well.
All right, yes.
Just to check. Is that right? All right, great.
Come on up.
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's an honor to speak with you. Um, just one quick thing. I just wanted to, uh, make it publicly known that, um, the intention of this is to just promote the city. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. Um, nobody else's agendas or anything like that, but just to, uh, promote us as a community. Just wanted to reiterate that. Thanks.
All right. All right, are there any questions or comments on this item? Do you want to make a motion?
I would love to. I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city manager to execute the co-op tower facade lease agreement and all documents necessary to effectuate the lease.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, W, please poll council.
Counsel Purser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Absolutely.
Counsel Cry.
Hi.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi. Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thanks, everyone. I guess I was so excited to get into the city manager's report.
You guys, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth.
Hi, Mary Elizabeth. Thanks for hanging in there, Tim.
Mike, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, just a reminder that Thursday from five to six thirty PM, uh, in this room, we have the riverfront naming process, and Ciara is going to, our communications and engagement manager is going to, uh, facilitate that process. Come with all your ID ideas that you can write them with Sharpies on on your post-it notes, and then we'll go through a quick process. We did invite the planning commission. We also invited previous council members, uh, since two thousand sixteen, and then we invited the leadership team as well. So, uh, we've got and and obviously, uh, council and the candidates for council. So, uh, um, we'll see how many are here. We'll have dinner, uh, as part of that. Uh, there'll be different pizza and salad, uh, for the for that process. And it'll be fun, and we'll we'll work on, uh, you know, narrowing down a name for the, uh, riverfront property. Uh, talking with the Fruta, uh, area Chamber of Commerce, uh, related to these visits that they're doing. Um, in general, we typically have them give, uh, like, uh, what we'd like to do and what we've worked out is a semi-annual, you know, a couple of times a year, just update in general for the chamber to the city council moving forward, um, as we're working on this MOU. Uh, but since they are doing these interviews, um, to keep that until they get through that process, are you all open to a short update like that on a quarterly basis where they have quarterly for them works well, because that'll give them time to have a group of businesses that they've been able to to interact with and then continue. So we'll we'll plan to do that. It's always it's it's great feedback for us, and they've they've been, uh, great to work with. If if we have additional information that we'd like to add uh, to that, uh, we we can go, we can, uh, also add that, you know, it might be the next round for someone they've already done a survey for, but, uh, we have that ability as well as a city. Um, in light of the fact that none of us ever like to see, uh, a business, you know, close in the community, I do, I did want to point out on the flip side of some of the the progress that we've seen recently, there's some new businesses that are opening up uh, or in the process. Uh, at the end of the month, we'll be celebrating, uh, one year of farm. That's twenty-three businesses. Uh, as of today, they just signed a new business. And ten of which are completely new businesses. So some of those might have been in business in in a various form of the valley or in in Fruta. But ten are completely new businesses to the to the city. Uh, we also have seen some others that have been mentioned previously, uh, that are either opened. And just thinking of tonight's meeting, uh, a new restaurant, um, the deal with one sixty-nine South, uh, South Mulberry is going to create um, additional commercial businesses as well. And then, uh, that you all had a part of, obviously, your liquor license has a part of a new restaurant. And then, uh, and then we're excited unrelatedness. I mean, we secured the ability for continued marketing on the tower. But as a side story to that, it's exciting to see Sparks Fly expand, and they're working with one um, and possibly another business to, uh, locate to that to that property. So, um, as is the nature of communities, sometimes you see businesses go, but you're also seeing quite a few, uh, come as well, and we're we're pretty excited for that, and just wanted to point that out. Uh, and excited for those new businesses in the community as well. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, who wants to start? Matthew, that's well, I'm.
I've got.
You made eye contact, so.
I've got two items, um, which I need counsel's, uh, assistance with. Um, the first one is the Colorado Capitol Conference is June eleventh through the thirteenth. This is done through CMU, but the idea is it's through an application process where people can go to, uh, the Washington DC, you meet with our representatives there, kind of learn some of the ins and outs and how it works. Um, my understanding is we have never gone before. Um, I personally think it would be of value for us to have a presence there, uh, especially as we look at potential programs like the Housing Assistance Program and stuff like that, to start to build those relationships, because the feds clearly have more money, uh, than we do in our budget by a small smidge.
I'd say even adding the bridge, because we're supposed to be getting funding for the bridge, too.
Yes. Right, so start to build, take advantage and build some of those relationships at the federal level. Um, once again, this is being, uh, organized by CMU. Um, I did check with CMU that if two of us were to apply to go, can those two be tied together? And the response was absolutely yes. So in terms of a cost, it's a thousand dollars per person plus hotel and air. Um, this is just gonna sound awkward for me to say. I think I personally would think it would make sense for Mike to go and for myself to go. And I kind of want to look to counsel kind of for thumbs up on that. So we'd have to, now, we still have to apply and get in. It'd be really embarrassing if we didn't. Okay.
Does Mike want to go with you?
Did you hear that question, Mike? You've got a fancy date coming, Mike. Ken, could you repeat that?
Said, does Mike want to go with you?
I.
Yes, I do.
You've seen planes, trains, and automobiles?
Well.
Those are not two pillows.
Thumbs up, so then Mike doesn't have a choice.
So that is, uh, issue one. Thank you. Um, and I'm struggling with this next one. Um, and the reason why I'm struggling with it is I know staff has done everything that they can do. I know they've been working with the vendors, but we're having a tremendous amount of line strikes. Um, utility line strikes, specifically gas line strikes. There was another one that was here. Um, and I do want to be mindful of the work that has gone into trying to prevent those. My understanding is Excel has hired another new vendor. I guess the ask is, if everybody's comfortable asking Mike to work with the new vendor, we've got to try to work with them and ratchet up the safety of this. We've, in my opinion, we've been lucky that nothing catastrophic has happened. So I, the ask is, can we ask Mike and staff to work with, see what we can do, working with them to increase that level?
Are these poor locates being done, or or is it, are they in too much of a hurry to get the, is this network?
Yeah, it's, I mean, a good example would be from what we were, the information we received, uh, either this morning or at the end of the day yesterday, I'm not, I'm not sure, was the one that happened, I mean, ye- yesterday and closed co-op for, uh, a period of time, which is not the first time businesses have been closed because of these gas line hits. Um, it was the the locate was off twenty-four feet, so it's, I mean, pretty significant. Um, it's not always necessarily the people doing the locate, but it's based on the records of, you know, additional lines that um, particular utility companies might not exactly, you know, have. They don't have that information on, so it's not, uh, or it's not accurate. And so, uh, we recently had a meeting staff with Excel Energy, uh, where we worked with the government, uh, affairs liaison, Brad McLeod, and he set us up to work with um, uh, various staff, and we had a virtual meeting and kind of went through all the ones that had occurred and um, made sure, you know, we were on the same page with them on like what the reasonings were, you know, if it was about, uh, and, uh, there's a decent amount of locates like that. It may even be worth, um, you know, putting some more on from that of, you know, and not not necessarily saying tonight, but possibly like a resolution from council or some kind of statement that we can add, you know, to think about. But I think first, we 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 definitely, we're going to go back to Excel Energy on yesterday's and the the few that have happened since our last meeting. They did switch vendors. Uh, but again, I I I don't necessarily know if that gets to the to the root of it, if, uh.
So I do know, um, Excel, specifically Excel Gas with the city of Boulder was having a similar issue, and I know the city of Boulder did, and I don't know all the details, but did something to help kind of stop that. Would it be inappropriate? Would it be out of line to ask Excel to come present to council about what they will do about the or what they can do about the to help with this?
I think that'd be very appropriate.
Okay.
We've experienced, we've experienced.
Yeah. I walked right into that, Tim. Thank you very much. Is everybody good with Mike getting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I think that would go a long way with our community, too, because this is a huge, huge concern and.
And we've been very fortunate.
I know Clear Networks has been frustrated with it, too. Like, they're they're definitely.
They are. They actually. Just after yesterday's, Clear Network says said they're they're not going to proceed in that area, um, because of how far this one was off until there's more clarity from Excel.
You let them know that we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. Yep.
It's getting ridiculous.
Can we also let them know we appreciate their communication with the community? They've done a phenomenal job, like, of responding to concern, I think so anyway, like, that they're doing a great job of talking to people and responding quickly and I.
There has been a marked improvement.
Yeah, there's been some people that have been upset, but then they come and they're like, oh, never mind, like, they took care of it. They were great. Like, I I think that's pretty impressive for the size of, you know, endeavor that they're taking on.
Yeah, we will definitely pass that on. And as you're interacting with residents, if any of them, you know, if their yard isn't quite to where it should be, they shouldn't hesitate to call them, or if if they're not getting, I mean, I think if they call them, they're going to get a good response, but they can also call us and we can coordinate with them because, um, they will go back and make sure that things are right, and we don't want people to just kind of, you know, settle, uh, or deal with it and be upset about that. So.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Janine.
I don't have anything tonight.
All right, James.
Nope.
Ken? We need to come back to you.
No, no, I I as a whole, as a.
Thing loading.
It's not a specific resident reached out to me, because I am the resident, but they they came out to install it yesterday, and I guess as a homeowner, I have no idea what I'm doing, and they show up, hey, can we'll show you, we're going to put it, we're going to put it here, we should run it right under this weed fabric. We're just going to run it like on the ground. They don't bury it. It's like, we can bury it if, and it was just like, I, like, they can put conduit and bury it if I want, but they couldn't do it today. But if you want today, we can just run it under the fabric and I it just seemed strange to me that.
Oh, you're talking from the from the streets of your house.
Up on my on my property, but as a homeowner, it feels like, I don't know what to tell them to do. Um, I told him, come back later, bury the conduit.
I think that that's a that's a good response.
But like, the rest of our tenant, you know, our, uh, people in Fruta, they may not, I don't.
Right.
It seems like a.
I think having a process, like having a recommended process that the city recommends and getting that communication out instead of, hey, the quick easy ways to run something across your yard, that isn't long-term, I don't.
Uh, we'll talk to, we'll talk to Clear, we'll talk to Clear Networks about that, actually. I mean, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up.
They should all be buried, right?
Wonder how many times.
I mean, that if homeowners don't want to have continued issues or having, you know, that would be the the right way to do it, so.
I think, guess, if it's not in a conduit, it can be zero to three inches, they said. But in a conduit, it has to be twelve to fifteen or so. So I don't know what they said, but.
I mean, our our permits, for example, are in the right-of-way, but not when it goes into the private, you know, not like we don't, we can't require it one way or another.
Require them to bury it?
In the right-of-way.
Not on private property.
No, on on the private property portion, within the right-of-way, yeah, that's what we've permitted them to do. It's a private transaction when it's each house to connect from the right-of-way to their house. And so.
So is there anything that?
We will talk to them about that because I'm just, I mean, we'll have a conversation with them about about.
When you're doing the lease, the sublease through, um, what, section ten, what was that? I can't remember. Region ten. Is there a way to put that into their agreement with whoever they get that it has to be buried?
They're already almost done, ninety percent?
No, no, I'm talking about from the residential side, because they're going to, they're going to lease out the the residential or or the commercial use of it, the end, the last mile.
Yeah, I don't know. I, we could look into that. I I'm not sure.
Then that would fix that problem of saying, wait, this.
Right. No, it's a good point. I mean, that could be a if you're if you're if you're providing last mile, we want to make sure that you're, uh, that you are doing this with each resident.
Right.
Connect, yeah.
My next meeting with GRVTC, it, we don't have one in April. They're going to have a workshop in May. No, I'm sorry, they don't have. The first meeting will be like the week after I leave, so. Somebody good. They want somebody good. So and a couple of you are out for GRVTC, so that, um, yeah, and then the Fruta Youth Action Council presented to us tonight, so, yeah, that's it for my groups.
All right, Amy?
Um, I don't have anything to report from boards and commissions. Um, I did wonder if in celebration of our one-year anniversary of the building department, if maybe we could have like a overview or just kind of a recognition of like, hey, here's what we've done with this.
That'd be, that'd be great.
I think it would be really cool. I kind of was surprised that, you know, you guys didn't bring us anything for that.
Okay.
I would like to request that.
Okay, so good.
Like a cake.
Yeah, yeah. Make it structurally sound.
Take the topper and put it in the freezer. They're supposed to do that last for the one year.
I I did see.
This is awkward, because we did have an internal party.
The ones who made the, okay.
Budget review. I didn't see.
I'm as surprised as you are that planning and development didn't.
I I did see, um, I think that would be.
Putting is delicious, guys.
That would be, I think that would be great. Uh, are you saying not only a recognition, but an update on what was?
I would really like to know, like, how many, you know, like, how many permits, like, yeah, just an overview of what what was accomplished in the first year. I would would love to, because I, that's information that I would love to pass on as well, like, you know, the success of that. And then my other one, I would like to kind of, I wanted to kind of take the temperature of, um, I would like to propose a proclamation recognizing our, uh, almost state-winning, uh, basketball team. They really brought our community together and like helped to, um, embrace the fruit of spirit, and I I think that they kind of deserve a little, they deserve an award and some recognition, I think. Okay.
All right.
Cool.
Are.
All right.
Are you going to write it in such a way that?
Absolutely loved reading.
Done in rhyme.
If that's okay.
I was going to say, I would, not to pass the buck, but you did such a good job that last time.
No, if that's, I actually, I would love to. I would.
That would be awesome.
They will need that by midnight?
It might take me a minute longer than midnight.
So then we'd want to get it on the probably the calendar or get with the school to see when, if they could be in maybe at the next council meeting or the first one in April.
Yeah.
We don't want to push it too far back.
That's okay, yeah.
We'll reach out to them to to on to scheduling and try to figure.
It's basketball.
Who wants to do it on the last day?
Yeah. But we're already having cupcakes and everything else perfect, right?
Lot more cupcakes.
Those boys fly.
All right.
That's all I've got.
That's all you've got in there, and you said nothing? All right, I don't have anything as well, so, um, our next item is our executive session, and just for those left in our audience, um, we are not planning on coming back in because we won't have a motion after this into public meeting. Um, and we will be having our executive session, uh, down in Mike's office. So with that, we'll need a motion to, uh, convene into executive session.
Ken, you're really good at these. Mr. Mayor, I move we move in convenient executive session for the purpose of determining positions related relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, negotiations, and instructing negotiators pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E with regard to development agreements and contracts with two forks ventures for the redevelopment of the lagoon property area sometimes referred to as the beach.
Okay.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any other questions? All right. We've got a first and a second. Any other questions?
Who seconded?
Janine?
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, W, please poll council?
Counsel Williams? Counsel Cry?
Hi.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Hansi? Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute break.